I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alderman Howden?
Bow your heads to me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, the opportunity to gather together as citizens and community leaders alike. Father, will you just ask that you lay your hand over this nation right now as we've seen just a trend of political violence and just things that don't define our nation. In fact, the young man that was snuffed out so unceremoniously was in so many ways trying to lead people to you. So I just, I feel that, I feel that presence in this chamber tonight, and I just ask you, watch your hand over us, in Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Marshall. All right, Mayor Milton is unable to preside over tonight's meeting. As acting president, I'll be running the meeting, but will also maintain my representation for Ward 1, and will be voting on tonight's matters. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Lucas, Howden, Cooper?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Denham, LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
By the way, the mayor is here via Zoom up there. There he is.
Can you see me, Clay?
We see you, looking good, looking good. This is the public comment section of the Board of Alderman Meeting. At this time, the Board will hear the citizens who have signed up in the order they are listed. Please note, the clerk will let speakers know when they have 30 seconds left, and a notification will sound when their time is up. We ask the speakers wrap up their comments upon hearing the 30-second warning. If a speaker would like a board member to bring an item from the consent agenda down for additional discussion, please note this request during comments. Please come to the freestanding mic right in front of us to address the Board. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we have one speaker, Gary Gromon, speaking on, has the not-so-dynamic duo abused or violated the Branson Municipal Code?
At the August 26, 2025, meeting of this Board, the last item on the agenda was a proposed ordinance extending the historic downtown Branson Community Improvement District. The staff report for the ordinance says, quote, "This item was requested to be put on the August 26, 2025, agenda by Alderman Schultz and Alderman Lucas." Alderwoman Ruth Denham said that in a June 10, 2025, executive session, the Board gave direction to administration, quote, "to move forward in discussions with the CID and provide the Board of Aldermen with updates," end quote. As of the August 26, 2025, Board meeting, administration had not finished those discussions and had not made a report to the Board. Alderwoman Denham continued, saying, "So much to my surprise, I saw this ordinance amendment on the agenda before us tonight, and I contacted the city. There had been no meeting to resolve the extended term as directed by the Board of Aldermen. I was informed that Alderman Schultz and Lucas took it upon themselves to draft this amendment against the Board's initial directive and met with our city attorney last Friday for four and a half hours. It's extremely inappropriate and unprofessional to request staff to take direction from two Aldermen versus the Board, especially ignoring what was originally discussed previously at the June 10, 2025, executive session," end quote. Alderman Lucas responded, quote, "Ruth, I have not put together any amendments of any type, so I don't know where your information is coming from. I did meet with Solan and Glenn. For how long, for how long was I there, an hour and a half, maybe at most?" City Attorney Solan said, quote, "Alderman Lucas left early," end quote. That brings two questions to mind. The first is a rhetorical question. What is the truth? The staff report for the proposed amendment would said, "This item was requested to be put on the August 26, 25, agenda by Alderman Schultz and Alderman Lucas," end quote, or Alderman Lucas's response to Alderwoman Denham's comments when he said, quote, "Ruth, I have not put together any amendments of any type, so I don't know where your information came from," end quote. I hope the truth was in the staff report, because under paragraph 2-62B of the Branson Municipal Code, it requires two Aldermen to originate an ordinance request for an agenda item. If Alderman Lucas did not put together any amendment of any type, let alone the specific ordinance, how did it get in the agenda? That, too, is a rhetorical question. The second question is not rhetorical. It's whether Alderman Schultz and Lucas were in violation or abuse of one or more of the provisions of the Branson Municipal Code, specifically paragraph 2-136F or subpar paragraph 2-156C1. In my opinion, the answer is a resounding yes. Paragraph 2-136F entitled "Dealing with Employees by Board or Mayor" says, among other things, "Neither the Board nor any member nor the mayor shall give orders," whoops, "to city employees except the city administrator, either publicly or privately." In my opinion, the record is clear that Alderman Lucas and Schultz used the color of their office to violate or abuse that provision when they spent 1.5 hours in the case of Alderman Lucas and over four hours in the case of Alderman Schultz with the city attorney having him develop the proposed ordinance. Accordingly, I would request that appropriate action be taken to determine if, in fact, they did, and if so, that proper action be taken on your part to document that fact, and more importantly, ensure that all city employees are protected from some actions and abuse in the future. Some might ask, but doesn't the Branson Municipal Code require the city attorney to draft ordinances for the Board? Absolutely. Subparagraph 2-156C1 of the code says, quote, "The city attorney shall draft and prepare for approval of the Board all ordinance and resolutions of the city as directed by the Board." It doesn't take a legal solemn to see that the actions of Lucas and Schultz were independent actions taken arbitrarily by themselves and not at the, quote, "direction of the Board." Still, others might ask, couldn't the city attorney have just said no? Maybe, but considering that the city attorney is hired and fired by the Board of Aldermen, that response would have been easier if he had a new job offer that was independently wealthy. In my opinion, no city employee, whether hired or fired directly by the Board or otherwise, should be put in a position where they have to make a summary decision and ask for your help to make that, make that happen.
30 seconds.
That's it.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We have no more speakers.
Well, that's it, okay. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the Board or staff would like to have moved down from the consent agenda to ask additional questions or comments? Anyone?
I request item number six be moved down, please.
And any others?
Yes, six, seven, and eight, please.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the items on the consent agenda as amended?
Your Honor, the items on the consent agenda are as follows. Approval of the Board of Aldermen minutes for the September 9, 2025, special meeting and September 9, 2025, regular meeting. Acknowledged receipt of finance committee minutes of the April 24, 2025, and July 24, 2025, regular meetings. Acknowledged receipt of the planning commission minutes for the July 1, 2025, regular meeting. Acknowledged receipt of advisory park board minutes for the June 18, 2025, regular meeting. Acknowledgement of disbursements for August 6, 2026, through September 11, 2025. Final reading of bill number 6592, an ordinance approving the Public Service Agreement with the Veterans Memorial Garden Incorporated for Maintaining the Beauty of the Branson Veterans Memorial Garden, authorizing the mayor to execute the documents related thereto. Final reading of bill number 6593, an ordinance approving the easement agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Neighborhood Rehabilitation Project for Hiawatha Heights. Final reading of bill number 6596, an ordinance approving the contract with Smokeball for legal project management software and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. And final reading of bill number 6597, an ordinance approving the contract with West Publishing Corporation and Thomas Reuters Enterprise Center for Legal Research Software and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. Your Honor, that concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion approving all items on the consent agenda?
So move.
Madam Clerk, will you provide a roll call vote for the consent agenda?
Lucas, Howden?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the final reading of bill number 6589, an ordinance approving the Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive TIF Plan redevelopment project area one and adopting tax increment financing therein.
You've heard the first reading of bill number 6589. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, and we'll now have a report from Lindsay.
Oh, there she is.
Hello, Lindsay.
Hello, good evening. You guys know me, Lindsay Colish, with Auburn Municipal Law. We serve the city as the Special Economic Development Council, and I'm here tonight on the three ordinances that were pulled off the consent agenda. Those are all relation to the Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive TIF Plan that was approved just at the beginning of this month, September 9. There are three ordinances there, because there are three different project areas within the redevelopment area. We've discussed in previous meetings how tax increment financing works, and what happens is that economic activity taxes and payments in lieu of taxes are collected in each project area for 23 years. That 23-year clock starts when tax increment financing is actually activated at each project area. So approval of each of these ordinances would activate tax increment financing at each of those separate project areas. Under the TIF Act, we have 10 years from approval of the TIF plan to activate those project areas, and when to activate is really a choice of the applicant usually. It typically occurs at some point prior to completion of development so that they can capture all of those revenues, but it can occur any time during that 10-year period. So these next three ordinances would approve and activate tax increment financing at each of those project areas. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Board? No one? All right, anyone from the audience wishing to speak regarding this matter? There are none.
Your Honor, I move to postpone the final reading of bill number 6589 to the March 24, 2026, regular meeting of the Aldermen.
We have a motion and a second on the postponement. Are there any members of the Board wishing to speak regarding this? Nope. Anyone in the audience? All right, any Aldermen? No? Please vote to postponement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Oh. Was we supposed to do a roll call?
We don't have to, it's okay. So the result of the vote is 5-0, and the motion carries. Your Honor, this is the final reading of bill number 6590, an ordinance approving the Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive TIF Plan redevelopment project area two and adopting tax increment financing therein.
You've heard the first reading of bill number 6590. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
Second.
Motion and a second, and Lindsay again?
Same thing on this ordinance. It would activate tax increment financing at the project area two.
Any Board members? I'm assuming no. Audience? Nope.
Your Honor, I move to postpone the final reading of bill number 6590 to the March 24, 2026, regular Board of Aldermen meeting.
Got a motion and a second on the postponement. Any members of the Board? Audience? No. Please vote on the postponement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the final reading of bill number 6591, an ordinance approving the Gretna Road and Town and Country Drive TIF Plan redevelopment project area three and adopting tax increment financing therein.
You've heard the first reading of bill number 6591. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So move.
Motion and a second. Lindsay with a big ditto.
Exactly. This would be for redevelopment project area three.
All right. Board members? Audience?
Your Honor, I move to postpone the final reading of bill number 6591 to the March 24, 2026, regular Board of Aldermen meeting.
Motion and a second on the postponement. Are there any Board members wishing to speak now? Still, nothing. Nothing. All right, let's vote on the postponement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries. Your Honor, the next item is a presentation on the City of Branson's annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2024 performed by Hood &amp; Associates, CPA PC.
All right, let's begin with Allison.
Good evening, Board. We have Michael Keenan here with Hood &amp; Associates to present our 2024 audit.
Is it Michael?
Michael.
Michael, that's right. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Michael Keenan with Hood &amp; Associates, here to present the financial and compliance audit for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2024. Can everybody hear me okay? And we've got a little PowerPoint presentation to go over. You should have received in your packet a large financial statement, as well as the single audit, the audit report on the schedule of federal awards, as well as the required communications and management letter. And my PowerPoint will kind of go over these three items, and then I'll open up the floor for any questions. Little bit about Hood &amp; Associates. We serve Missouri, Kansas, Oklahoma, and Texas. We go through what's also called a peer review, when outside accounting firm will come in and review our quality control standards, and we have been awarded the highest rating as a result of that review. We're members of various professional organizations. The American Institute of Certified Public Accounts, AICPA, really dictate what we and other external auditors do on engagements, and also we're a member of the AICPA Government Audit Quality Center, and we're licensed to practice in the states of Missouri, Kansas, Oklahoma, and Texas. Now, the scope of the audit was the annual comprehensive financial report, again, your larger document, and the city plans to submit this report to the Government Finance Officers' Association for its achievement in excellent in financial reporting. And the city believes, as well as I do, is that the city will qualify for that prestigious award once again with this report. Also, the single audit, and again, the city had three major programs this year. The Economic Development Cluster, or the EDA, CDBG, and both of those funding related to the Compton Project, and also there was some ARPA funding related to the Park Project. Management's responsibilities include the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. This includes the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal controls that are relevant to the preparation of these financial statements that are free of material misstatement, whether that's due to error or fraud. Management is also responsible to be following laws and regulations, as well as implementing systems designed to achieve compliance with those laws and regulation, contracts, and grant agreements. And finally, they're also responsible for the selection and application of accounting principles for the preparation of these financial statements and the schedule of federal awards that are conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Now, here are the auditors. What are we responsible for? We're responsible to conduct our audit in accordance with auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in the government audit standards, as well as comptroller general of the United States of America and the uniform guidance. Again, the uniform guidance dictates what we do related to auditing your schedule of federal awards. We're also responsible to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements, again, are free of material misstatement. Reasonable assurance is a high-level assurance, but is not absolute assurance, and therefore we cannot guarantee an audit conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards will always detect material misstatements when they exist. Again, we take a risk-based approach, and we do not test all transactions, therefore we can't provide absolute assurance. And we're also responsible to report on internal controls over financial reporting, as well as compliance with laws and regulations. Now, the auditing standards board of the American Institute of Certified Public Accounts, again, the AICPA, recommend we communicate these matters to the governing board. Illegal acts, none came to our attention as a result of us performing our audit procedures. Changes in significant accounting policies. There were no significant changes in accounting policy for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2024. Please to report, we had no difficulties or disagreements with management, and we have cooperation and full access to all the books and records and transactions that we selected for testing. Now, financial compliance audit really addresses these next three questions. The first question are, the financial statements free of material misstatement? Our response to that is, we have issued an unmodified opinion that indeed the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Again, sometimes that's referred to as a clean opinion. That's the highest level of opinion that external auditors can give on financial statements. Second question, are internal controls over financial reporting adequately designed and operating effectively? And we did identify deficiency in internal controls that we consider to be a material weakness. Again, that's kind of outlined in here under spark communications, but it really relates to financial reporting. Our audit procedures identified some adjustments that were material to the financial statements that were not identified by the city's internal controls. And by our professional standards, when we find these, we gave and presented those journal entries to staff who agreed, and those have been reported and posted in the financial statements. But nevertheless, we have to record and report that as material weakness. Management has provided the response, which will mostly consist of looking at year-end closing processes and those types of things. I also should note that there was some transition, as you know, in personnel, and also implementation of a new accounting system that were contributing factors, in my opinion. The final, the city comply in all material respects with finance-related laws and regulations. Our response to that is no noncompliance is noted with finance-related laws and regulations that govern the city's operations. Now, the management letter contains suggestions and best practices and possible improvements in internal control, and we did note that there were a couple funds that exceeded budgeted appropriations, and our recommendation is to review that process and make the appropriate budget amendments as it become necessary. We also have some future accounting pronouncements. However, I don't believe any of those new pronouncements are going to have any significant effect on the financial reporting of the City of Branson. And last year, we had some recommendations that are in here that we wanted to follow up, and that was related to fiscal policy and procedure to review, and that's an ever-ongoing process, especially when you're implementing a new computer system. And so we recommend that that process continues. And also, we had a comment related to cybersecurity, which is ever-present today in society, and again, I know of at least three larger municipalities that have been attacked. So that's always something to be concerned about, and I think the city addresses that and has insurance, but it's something to always be aware of. And finally, Hood &amp; Associates CPAs certainly appreciate the opportunity to serve with the City of Branson as your auditors. So I want to thank Kathy and Allison and her staff in the Finance Department for their cooperation and professionalism that they demonstrated in completing this engagement. And now I'll open the floor to any questions that any of you may have.
You guys have a question? No? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Do you have something, Kathy? You're good? Okay.
And I would say, if you do have questions later on, certainly you'll get my contact information from Kathy or Allison, and I'll be more than happy to try to address those questions. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thanks, Michael. Madam Clerk?
Your Honor, the next item is a resolution authorizing the submission of applications to Tany County, Missouri for sewer sales tax funding in support of the city's planned 2026 sewer system improvements.
Do I have a motion adopting this resolution?
Second.
Motion and a second, and we'll have a staff report from Kendall.
Good evening. The Tany County Commission, as part of its yearly budget, sets aside funding from the county's half-cent sewer sales tax, which may be used for sewer system improvement projects that have been submitted to the county by municipalities within Tany County. This funding is provided for municipal projects that meet capital improvement criteria as described in the county's sewer sales tax usage guidelines. Support of this resolution would allow staff to submit requests seeking sewer sales tax funds to support our planned 2026 sewer system improvements from the Tany County Commission. So I've got a slide presentation to show you those projects itself. So the first project I want to highlight is our wastewater treatment facility, emergency generators for Compton Drive. So we have three generators that we would like to replace. I've got a picture here of our oldest generator, which here recently had a failure of a water pump, which took approximately six months to receive that part. So we had to use our backup to our backup to keep us in operations, and we had some power failures during that period of time as well. So thank goodness we had some backups to our backup. However, it puts us at a limitation for addressing other emergency situations out in the system. So this cost is roughly $1.7 million. As part of our flood protection project, we completed a portion of the design work during that project. We set automatic transfer switches in place. So this project here would consist of the generator pads, the generators themselves, and conduits running to those locations. The second project is an annual ongoing project that we work on is our sewer system rehabilitation. So this would be lining of existing sewer mains. So we have roughly 15 miles of clay tile sewer main within the City of Branson, and we're working through that strategically, trying to address the deficiencies of those sewer mains. And I've got some examples in the pictures here. You'll see on the upper left some cracked clay pipe with some roots growing in it, and then you'll see a worst-case scenario of water intrusion in one of the pipe joints in a trunk line, and then you'll see the finished product at the bottom after the liner is in place. So it seals up all the cracks and keeps tree roots out and protects from intrusion of unwanted waters. So that cost is estimated at $500,000. Project three would be a substantial project, the lift station number 30, high-head pump station, and equalization basin, and this would be the engineering cost at $1.2 million. So this lift station is located just off of Epps Road in the Roark Valley Basin. This is how it sits today. We have a million-gallon equalization basin that we use for peak rain events, like we had today. We actually had to use this tank today where Compton Drive started to exceed its hydraulic capacity, and we have to stop the flow somehow. So we divert it to an equalization tank to buy us some time in the treatment process while rains start to slow down. However, the future plan here is to add another equalization tank. The existing one roughly buys us around between four to six hours of time, which is not very much in our wastewater world. So the project consists of adding another tank just to the right of the one that's shown, and then adding high-head pumps and a force main that would convey wastewater from the Roark Valley over to the Cooper Creek Valley and on to the Cooper Creek Treatment Facility for treatment. This would relieve Compton Drive of a significant amount of flows from that Roark Valley Basin, and in turn, again, convey them to the Cooper Creek area, which Cooper Creek is designed to be expanded, or it was built so that we could expand Cooper Creek. We have the area, the acreage, to do that, whereas Compton Drive, it is confined to now the flood wall protection. We don't have an ability to expand Compton Drive. So we have to have a way to remove capacity from Compton and push it to a different treatment facility to allow more growth in the Compton Basin area itself. So this project does that. So it's approximately a mile of force main install, which would be, the projected alignment would be through the Murphy Edition, and then crossing Highway 76, Country Boulevard there at Panera Bread Site, and then downstream of that, we'd need roughly 800 feet of 24-inch gravity main to be installed. So real quick on that project, construction-wise, it's projected to be approximately $12 million in the future. The project number four would be Spring Creek North subdivision, so this would be a sewer main system. This project consisted of replacing an existing privately-owned sewer collection system with a public sewer system. Estimated cost is $750,000. So this project is actually outside the city limits. We actually did partial engineering back in 2019. We received county sewer sales tax money for that engineering, and then we got postponed because COVID. We ran out of funds, and projects were postponed. But we've, here in the last year, we've been receiving multiple complaints from those sewer customers within that subdivision failing collection system. You'll see in the You'll see in the, in the bottom of the picture, the green lines, that's, that's our public sewer system, and, and the red lines represent the projected alignment of the new sewer main system itself. This would also include installing service lines to each one of those homes. I've been in conversation with the, with the county commissioners and as, as well as the sewer district, and they're in heavily support of the project itself, as it does serve customers outside of city limits and, and there'd be appropriate dollars spent out of the sewer sales tax funds. Again, we're at 90% complete on engineering, so we have a little bit of engineering work to, to complete, and then we could kick that project off. So overall, we recommend approval of, of these projects, and we were projected to spend 4.15 million in sewer sales tax if approved. Happy to answer any questions.
Woo! Feel like Kendall's back. He's asking us for money again.
Go ahead, Ralph. Did you have something? Oh. So the gener- I don't know, that really matters, because there's the big number. Replacing two generators and then adding one for a backup, was that what I see?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, currently, we can't run the entire treatment facility with the backup generation power that we have on hand. We have to limit our, our operations when we have power outages. We had, usually power outages come in form of storm events during heavy rain or wind, which causes outages on the Liberty Utility side. We had a couple instances this year that, where we had power outages due to non-storm-related events. So we rely heavily on these generators. We have to have them in place, otherwise we have nowhere for this sewer to go.
Yeah, no, I get it. I've got a generator to theater. They're, they're pricey.
They are very pricey.
And mine's always broke, something's wrong. Thirty-nine thousand dollars to replace one automatic transfer switch is what I'm looking at right now.
Yes.
So I, yeah. Did you have something? Go ahead.
A question on the property outside of city limits. Are those people currently our customers?
They, they are currently both our water and sewer customers.
Okay.
The, just a little bit of history on that. Back in the mid-2000s, we were approached by the Department of Natural Resources to help this subdivision out in, in two ways. One is to run a service line for water from the west, from the Palace View Complex, over to the existing well site on this property. Their well went bad. So we installed a two-inch service line and put a master meter there, located just next to the well site, and connected into their existing system. So, and in each, each of the residences in there installed their own private personal meter, which we read monthly. So we manually go and read those meters monthly, and then there's a master meter there as well that we read. And there is water loss. We are not recouping any, any dollars back from that water loss of that master meter because there's no association, there's no Property Owners Association there anymore. It's dissolved. The, those residences let that resolve, dissolve several years ago. And then the same with the sewer system. The DNR approached us, they used to have a lagoon on the south side of the subdivision, and asked if they could connect into our public sewer system, which we worked in turn with the Tany County Sewer District for funds to do that. So we've been taking their sewer for several years now, and the unfortunate part is, is there's no continuing authority taking ownership of that privately-connected collection system, which is, can pose a problem. So this is a definite project that we need to do.
Refresh me where, where that is.
So this is Spring Creek. Spring, Spring Creek goes between Fall Creek Road and Green Mountain Drive.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to think of, there's Champion Condos, the Thousand Hills Golf Course. It's kind of on the west side of the Thousand Hills development.
Gotcha.
And there is a couple homes in that northwest corner that are annexed into the city that are currently on septic systems. So this would provide sewer to those two citizens there.
Hmm. Anybody else? Glenn? Ralph? No?
Kathy?
You're good. Okay. Thanks, Kendall. Um, we gonna vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. There are none.
Result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries. Your Honor, the next item is the public hearing and first reading of Bill Number 6599, an ordinance amending Appendix A of the Branson Municipal Code pertaining to water and sewer rate adjustment of utility fee schedule.
All right, we will now open this public hearing and begin with a staff report from old Ben. Not old, old.
I resemble that remark. As both daughters says, I resemble that remark. Every year, obviously, we bring to you guys the first reading for, first reading for the water sewer. We do this ahead of the budget. It gives you time to think about what's out there. And you might wonder why I'm sitting here, standing here instead of our A-team. Kendall, I've had the luxury of working with Kendall for the last few years when he brings to us his rate model. When we looked at that rate model, and Allison did it again this, did it this year along with myself, we look at their rate model and compare it against what budget numbers we've asked the department for. And we've met with all the departments, obviously, I say we. Allison's staff met with the departments. I've been able to go through the numbers, especially on water sewer, just to take a look at what's been happening, right? From one year to the next. So what I wanted to do is really talk to you today a little bit about, about what I've found or the observations that, that, that we've seen on this. I'm gonna ask Kendall to help present some of the capital items, because there's, that's way above my pay grade. Branson Utilities, as you know as well as I do, the residents have enjoyed a low rate, and, and most of that is because of the tourism tax. But although you just heard applications that are going to take place for additional infrastructure, on top of tourism, we've got more applications going out. And historically, those rates have been anywhere from 2% to 3% increases on average for residents. Most of our increases have been over on the commercial side. What the rates included in this, take that same stance. Those rates are still low. We're not bringing them up to where they're equivalent to our neighbors. We're still at that bottom, the bottom of the echelon when it looks at our neighbors paying for that water. When we also look at the rate models, we look at three different cost factors. Obviously, operating and maintenance, capital, and, well, capital, small capital and then large capital. Large capitals paid for out of the tourism fund, obviously. But the small capitals rate capital, rate-funded capital, along with operating. The operating cost has been going up. And, and just as an example, and I've used from 2023, no magic, to the number between 23 and 26, just to capture a couple of the actual years in there, utility costs, especially electric's gone up anywhere from 25 to 28% in that timeframe. That's $400,000, three to $400,000. Machinery, machinery and equipment, maintenance and repair has gone up. Chemicals are up by 33% over that timeframe. Cost of supplies, and I'm not talking about pencils and pens, these are cost of supplies and actual treatment, has gone up 300%. When we look at the capital that's, that this fund is, is, is paying for, the small capital, I'm not talking about just rolling stock, we're talking about everything else, generators, you name it that's in there. Those costs have been going up exponentially. And so the pressure's on for this fund. The pressure's on for the tourism fund as well. And the tourism fund, because it's above-ground and below-ground infrastructure, that's, we've enjoyed using that fund for this large capital. But as we start seeing a lot of the street improvements, and we're trying to find more money for, you know, above-ground infrastructure, that pressure's gonna be on that tourism fund to be able to absorb more. And just as an example of what Kendall and his group has done, the cost differential between one year to the next, and this is not counting capital, this is only operating and maintenance, from 23, 22 to 23 has been 16% increase. 24 was 18, 25 is 15, and when we look at 26, it's 10% increase. So what he's able to do, he's been able to squeeze this down as much as he can in order to get the maintenance, operating and maintenance down to an understandable, hopefully, well, the target's single-digit, but he's getting there. But with that being said, what I'd like to do is go into, if I can, this is a working... Yeah, forward. Go one.
I can help you from here. Which, which one are you looking for?
Keep going. These are out of order. Go the other way.
So that's, that's the first.
That's the first one. There we go. There we go, right there. We're gonna go the other way this time. So Branson as a city serves water to 33% of its residents, 33% of the residents. The rest of the residents are different, obviously, a different broader water provider. And that accounts for around 3,000 customers. Another additional, just over 7,000 customers are sewer customers. Now, the typical residential water consumption, and I did test this now that both daughters moved out, it is 5,000 gallons. It's not 10,000, 5,000 gallons each month, and I was right, it's 5,000. But what I pay is a lot more than this $26 that this thing's going up to. So $4.42 increase on the, on the residential side for water. On the sewer side, it's a $3 increase to $23.13. Go the other, go ahead. On the commercial, one more. There we go. On the commercial customer data, 921 commercial properties, half of these have a 5/8 meter with the averaging 15,000 gallons a month, and the other are two meters with 100,000 gallons monthly. Go ahead. So on the rates on this, again, 15,000 and 100,000, 15,000 is going up $18 to $110 on the water side. Their sewer side's $14 up to $111. When we look at the customers that are 100,000 gallons and above, we're looking at an average water bill of $783, which is a $130 increase. We look at the monthly water sewer bill on that same customer, it's going up by 105 or almost $106, up to $813. Now, on the capital projects, go one more. I'm gonna ask Kendall to come up and talk a little bit about the capital projects, but these are capital projects that are built, built into the rate structure that, and the CIP. One of the things you're gonna see on the sixth, I believe still the sixth, is the, the budget that has a lot of this detail spelled out in it.
Yep, thank you, Ben. So what you'll see is a, is a snapshot of, of capital projects for 2026 for both water and sewer. And these are just generalized, so to speak, but it highlights some significant items that, that have been added to the rate models since last year. The, you know, different pumps and valves, so each year, we, we take, staff takes an assessment of existing equipment, and we, we do our best to, to predict failure, because we want to be ahead of the curve. We want to be proactive in our maintenance so that we don't, we're not put in a position to where we have to limit services for a particular reason. And so we, we take a proactive approach. We assess, our staff assessed components each year. It's, our staff does an amazing job, and, and you'll, when you see those staff members, and they, they come to me and, and, and reports and say, hey, it's, it's interesting to listen to them talk, because when you ever talk to an operator, they have an ear for sound, and they start hearing this pump start acting a little funny, and, and they're in tune to that. And, and sure enough, they can, they can tell when something's starting to fail. But they do a really good job of assessing equipment, and so we adjust the model year to year to do that. We try to project, project the model out as best we can with the crystal ball that we have in hand, but some changes does take place from year to year. The upgrades of the PLC network, that's our site security, or our cybersecurity efforts, that's something that was added last year for 2025, and it'll continue on in 2026, hopefully, and in 2027 as well. That'll be an ongoing number that you'll see there to help us get caught up with our existing components. Also, site security, roof repairs, process equipment, it all costs real dollars. It's, it's expensive to maintain. And then we have our water tower maintenance program that's been ongoing for several years now, and it's, and it's, and it's done really well for us. Our water towers are in really good shape. It's an asset that are really expensive. And I actually, I, I was in a water conference today with, I like to call it the water bosses of southwest Missouri, but we were talking water allocation out of Stockton Lake, and, and one of the resident municipalities, Nixa, I was talking to Travis with Nixa, and, and he said, you know what, Kendall, what, what a water tower costs these days? And so they just bid out a million, a million-gallon tower, similar to our Pacific Tower or, or Landmark, composite-style tower. And that same tower in 2019 cost them $2.5 million. In, in today's bids, it was between $8 to $10 million in today's dollars. So it's important that we maintain those assets, because they do cost a lot of money. And, and the same with sewer capital, we have pumps that we're constantly rebuilding. Sewer's worse on, on equipment. It's, you know, it's, the, the component of water that goes through that is very gritty, and, and it, it wears out components much faster than on the water side. We are working on wastewater, wastewater conveyance studies, sewer collection rehab. As you see, we're putting a lot of dollars towards, towards INI mitigation, because we, we get hit heavily during rain events. So you'll see a lot of that in our, in our capital from year to year as well. And, and these are, these are rate-funded capital that is existing components that we're replacing, that should be funded by rates itself to, to keep up. So it's operations and maintenance that, that is ongoing, that, that needs replacement. And then again, tourism dollars are, are being used for those large capital items that we have coming up in itself. And we have a lot of, of large capital items in tourism right now, and, and we're actually projected to, to outspend the revenue that we're collecting for tourism for next year with capital projects. So what this model, I believe what this model does, is it starts to balance out the needs with our system, as well as, as well as help with the tourism funds itself, because we've got a lot of projects on the tourism side. And just to highlight which, what I'm proposing for budget is, is we have the lift station, again, Lift Station 30 project, that's over a million in, in engineering, but the construction's 12 million. Along with that project, I'll have to do a treatment plant expansion with Cooper Creek. So we're looking at potentially a $4 million engineering cost, as well as a $40 million project. So that's gonna weigh heavily on the tourism fund, and we're trying to balance what funds we have available. Tourism itself will not be able to sustain our needs. We have roughly over $200 million in projects that are in the next 20 years for water and sewer. And, and if you do the math, we can't keep up. And plus, we have, and that includes, I mean, those, that 200 million does include our neighborhood improvements. It includes the water main portion of 76 improvements. It does not include anything else that's spent out of tourism, like streets and stormwater improvements or sidewalk. So there's lots of other needs that needs to come out of tourism as well, to balance what Michael's group needs for the city, as well as, as, as the water and sewer needs, because it is a partnership, right? They're both important, but, you know, that's where we have to look at priorities and see where we're at, and to keep the system, the core function of the city running, so. So I say all that to say is that, that we, in our, in our focus group for the rate So I say all that to say is that we, in our focus group for the rate model, between Kathy and Allison and I and Ben, we really took a look at it deep dive, and planning ahead and trying to figure out what is the most sustainable option for the city, for water sewer side of things. And we believe that this rate model does well with that. We do it in incremental rate changes each year, versus other cities usually hold off for several years, and then they hit them hard with a major rate increase. I can give you an example of a neighbor to the north, that they had a significant rate increase last year, and it'll be again in 2026, I'm saying, this year, I should say twenty twenty-five, they'll have another one in 2026 and another one in 2027. But I just looked up their little calculator online a while ago. For 2026, their combined water and sewer bill would be a hundred and twenty-eight dollars for five thousand gallons of usage, versus our total combined of forty-nine dollars. So just keep that in mind, that we are still really under on the residential side of things when it comes to water and sewer rates itself. But anyway, happy to answer your question. I won't go through all the slides on the capital, because it's just a repeat of same components over and over again, pumps and equipment.
Kendall, what do you estimate the return or revenue, or whatever you want to call it, with this increase, where do you estimate that number would be?
As far as the revenue created? Okay. The revenue...
Based off all the projections and the numbers that you have, what would that total number be?
For water, revenue for next year projected, this combines both the residential and the commercial increase, would be an additional revenue of just over one point one million. Now, on the sewer, you're...
But that was water alone?
That was water.
Commercial, residence, together?
That'd be commercial and residential. Now, out of that, out of that number, six hundred thousand of it would be generated by commercial, and that'd be... Actually, over that, I'm sorry. I have to go back, I'm sorry, I'll have to figure that out. Break that down for you. Let me go to the sewer side of it. The sewer side would be just over one, almost one point two million for the water, or the sewer customers, both residential and commercial. Apologize, I'm stumbling around there a little bit. Trying to read my spreadsheet. My brain ain't raining right now.
Well, no, I was just... I mean, yeah, that's a lot of money, but we've also seen how much is going out. So I just wanted people to realize, it's not like it's a money grab to make more money. It's money to get to keep sustainable.
So our approach has been, we're just trying to meet the curve, right? We're not getting ahead of the curve. We're just trying to meet that curve and do incrementals each year. If we wanted to get ahead of the curve, we'd have to have a much larger increase. And then, the next years, we would drop down to significantly less increase from then on.
Sure. Marshall?
Kendall, when you do the projections based on the tourism tax going forward, again, based on our needs, how much are you factoring in some of the new projects that could come to the city and those kinds of things? Are you being uber-conservative when it comes to that? Or are you maybe envisioning some increases when it comes to our tourism tax intake?
So that's not figuring in any of the new projects. This is just based off of what we know today, and that's neighborhood improvements, that's seventy-six improvements. That would be ongoing major projects, like force main improvements for major lift stations, that'd be lift station rebuilds. That's just for existing infrastructure, that two hundred million dollar figure.
Right, I apologize. I think you're answering based on needs as far as infrastructure items going forward. What I'm talking about is the potential of making more revenue to the city because of some of these tourism projects, basically. So that's what I'm asking. Do you factor those in when you're saying that basically the infrastructure side of the tourism tax isn't gonna cut it for our needs going forward the next ten, twenty years? Are you factoring in some of those potential increases in what that tourism tax would benefit the city?
In my personal assessment, no, I've not, because I don't have the ability, the knowledge to be able to project that. I don't have that crystal ball in hand, right? I'm just using historical data from past years of how much we normally bring in in tourism dollars, and what goes out to marketing, and what stays in-house for our infrastructure improvements. That's what I'm basing my assessment off of.
Any other aldermen?
I was just gonna say, like, the tourism tax in the past has just been that thing that's been able to tamp down our rates, you know, and it's been used that way. And, you know, we've been several years, this is our third or fourth conversation with you about this, and we knew this was coming. We knew that we were gonna have to make some adjustments when it came to the capital improvements, and as those started to stack, and here we are, you know? We didn't kick the can down the road, it's just we kinda floated along the way. But now we're at that point where if we don't make those adjustments along with those capital improvements, we'll be underwater, no pun intended, but... So it's definitely a smart move, and the fact that we're tapering it and not really getting ahead of the curve, again, just kind of gives us the ability and flexibility to maintain those lower rates, even though there is this, you know, can this increase this time? So, you know, smart move and definitely a necessity. I mean, we've all seen the numbers, and we can go upside down really quickly if we don't make the adjustment now, so. But we knew this was coming. I mean, we've had these conversations, and we're here, so.
I appreciate that. I've tried, over the years, to really relay that message that, hey, it could be coming. And just what we're seeing, and again, treatment plant expansion, that was looked at pretty heavily in 2015. We went through the anti-degradation study of Lake Tennecomo, and we had approval to expand the treatment plant at Cooper Creek in 2015 from the three point four million to the six point eight million gallon. That's be the first phase of it. But at that time, the city's leaders chose not to do that. We'd done minimal improvements at that point, because seventy-six was taking place. Those dollars went towards seventy-six at that time.
And I recall too, there were some assets that we didn't upgrade during COVID based on the unknowns, and, you know, where, is it, which one's the one out? Is it Chateau Cove, the one that was, it was a station there but no pump? And we did it like every, was it like every four months, then it was every month, then it was like every two weeks, and it was every week? Then now it's like, it was every day, and then if they'd have bought that pump, let's say it was like, I don't know what, a couple hundred thousand, then we ended up having to buy one, and it was like six hundred fifty thousand or something like that? Those are all factored into these adjustments, too?
Yes, definitely so. And thankfully, we received sewer sales tax dollars for that project, but if we would have built it back in 2007, it would have cost three hundred thousand, but in today's dollars, it costs almost a million.
Alderman Schultz?
Yeah, thanks much, Kendall, for the good report. The beginning slide where it said we have three thousand customers, is that households? Is that meters, or is that estimated to be individuals?
So it's, we're roughly about a third of the citizens of Branson, the residential of Branson is...
That's what I'm trying to clarify, is it population or is it households?
Households, customers, like actual meter connections.
Yeah, so it's three thousand meters that we're talking about on the residential side, so probably about half of our households for the city, something like that, right?
I couldn't answer that, just going off the meter counts and how many connections compared to sewer connections we have, but as far as population, I don't know that number.
And then, I had, and I did it really quickly, so it might not be accurate, but I had done the total of the increase and came up with an amount lower than what you had just quoted between water and sewer for the total increase. I noticed when I look ahead at the rate schedule that's part of this package, that meter fees are also going up. When you show how much individual bills are going up, is that increase in the meter fee also in that total?
Yes, so the, for example, on the water side, your base rate would increase to fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents, and then the cost per thousand is three dollars and eighty-four cents, so that when you take that five thousand gallons of usage, that totals out to that twenty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. So four dollars and forty-two cents a month increase. So it includes both base rate and the price for a thousand gallons. Yes.
Then, you know, last year when we looked at this, we were looking at a schedule that you put together through 2029 that showed a two percent increase year after year after year, and it seemed like the reserve fund was getting higher towards the end of that cycle, and recognizing all the things you just talked about. But my question is, what does that look like now? If this year is essentially a fifteen percent increase for residences, what are the out years looking like in that model? You seem to mention additional rate increases, what are those?
So I'll run real quick through the water side first. So the percentage, if we're talking percentage, again, it's twenty percent on, what we have plugged into the model right now is twenty percent on residential and twenty percent for commercial. Last year, we did a three percent on residential and sixteen percent for commercial. So that, with the twenty percent increase for 2026, that would put us at a reserve amount of twenty-seven percent. So we like to hover right around close to thirty percent, between that twenty and thirty is what we aim for. Twenty twenty-seven, if we continue on with this model, as the components that are plugged into it, we would be, we would have a eight percent increase in 2027 for both residential and commercial, with a twenty-six percent reserve. Twenty twenty-eight would be five percent with a twenty-six percent reserve. Twenty-nine would be a five percent with a twenty-eight percent reserve, and thirty would be a twenty-nine percent reserve with a five percent increase. So pretty much, right now, the way we have it plugged in and modeled out, from 2028 on, we'll be hovering around five percent increases for commercial and residential on water side, if we stay with this plan. On the sewer side, it's, again, last year was three percent, and on residential, eight percent on commercial. Twenty twenty-six, we have it shown for fifteen percent, and that's a sixty-one percent reserve. In 2027, we would drop down to an eight percent increase for both, and that'd be a thirty-six percent reserve. Twenty twenty-eight would be an eight percent increase and a twenty-seven percent reserve. Twenty-nine would be an eight percent increase with a twenty-five percent reserve, and thirty would be a five percent increase with a twenty-four percent reserve. And then from thirty on, we're projected to be at five percent as well.
Then the last question is, you alluded a couple of times to shifting in the amount of tourism tax that comes into your budget. Specifically, what is that shift? How much is moving out of your budget?
Allison, will you help with this?
There's nothing moving out of Kendall's budget, per se. Like, these are all general operating costs, like operating capital and small capital equipment that is moving and going into his fund. He was funding the majority of this anyway, it's just more expensive now. And so instead of shifting a couple of these projects to tourism to cover the small capital that really needs replaced, it's staying in the utility fund. So then the tourism can fund the large capital that Kendall needs in the next five years, because we have major capital projects that he needs to fund out of tourism. And then these will go to fund the small components that takes care of the existing infrastructure. So it's not a decrease in tourism dollars going to fund the utility rate model or anything. He's gonna stay the same or get more money from those tourism dollars. This is just for long-term, to fund the small capital and replacing the parts in that equipment.
Let me ask it a different way then. How much small capital in this budget plan is not being funded by tourism?
Roughly four million for 2026. So our operating budget is around, I believe, thirteen million for just operations and maintenance, small capital will be around four million itself.
My general comment here, and I heard about this from some residents, I'll reflect it here, is I think everybody's aware of Liberty Utilities move to go to somewhere between a thirty and forty percent rate increase. That's in front of the Public Service Commission right now. And I realize that's also impacting us, too, from a cost perspective. But, you know, when you add that and then go back to the residents and say, we're going to increase your city utilities by fifteen percent, it's just not feeling really good to hit everybody in one year with these increases. Was there any thought given to, since you do kind of decline the rate of increases over the out years, was there any thought to pushing some of that out a little bit, so it isn't such a big hit in the first year and spread it out more?
Yes, so we take a look at that. We take a look at the capital, and we try to balance it out as much as possible. However, we've had such a backlog of capital improvements over the years that started with, well before COVID. But COVID really postponed a lot of things, even worse. We started, we was doing really good in 2019, revenues were up, doing really well, and then COVID hit, and so, and we were trying to make up some ground with capital improvements, with capital replacements at that point, but then it got postponed. And so now we're sitting with a lot of backlog of improvements that's needed. And again, those pumps and equipments and things are really wearing quickly. We're seeing some replacements that we didn't schedule for budget, but we're making do, because we're cutting other things out in our operations this year to try to make up for that. So we have to balance that out as well. But we could, if we pushed it off, we're taking risk, right, of component failures, and then we're gonna be spending the money out of reserves, and then we'll have to make it up again, you know, make it up through rates eventually. I looked at a lower rate increase, taking the approach of not such, a lower amount of rate increase and see how long we can push it off, but then that makes it go up a lot higher. So instead of a twenty percent increase, if we waited till next year, it'd be a twenty-five percent increase, or it could even be a thirty in the two years on below that, after that. So you either tackle it now incrementally, or you're gonna be putting it off, and you're gonna have a much larger increase, like a lot of these other entities do.
Yeah, my thought there was, you know, try to spread it out more, not, and I realize at the end, you're going to end up with a higher rate, I understand that. But the other thing that I think you indicated, and by the way, you're great at communicating all the details of your plan, it's really nice to hear that, so thank you. But the part that doesn't seem to be in this, if I understood you correctly, is any assumptions about an increase to tourism tax. So we seem to be saying we've got projects in the near term that we've got to fund through the rates to our consumers, and yet we're kind of turning a blind eye towards any estimates of increases in tourism tax to fund some of that. So it would just seem to add more credence to, couldn't we push off maybe not all of the increase, but some of the increase, just to be kinder to our residents, to the further out years with the hope that our tourism tax is going to absorb some of what we're talking about spending?
So we can't over-project revenues for tourism, right? Because then if you start and you have an engineering study for this and you're ready to go, and now you don't have the millions of dollars you expected to have there in your revenue stream. So one thing that Ben and I like to do is be super-conservative when it comes to revenues. And this is for our twenty-six rate model, and then we'll do a five-year forecast, right? So then we take that five-year forecast, and we're like, okay, it's two percent here, it's two percent here. We know all this new business came on, so now it's gonna hit tourism, and so now it's ten percent in that year. But as of now and as of 2026, in that rate model, and how expensive all of these capital projects are that we need to do to expand our infrastructure, we take that revenue into account, but then those have to fund the new things, and the new roads, and the above-ground infrastructure to support this new tourism as well. And so we have to put that into the model with the increase in revenue, which offsets that increase and then goes back against the utility fund as well. So there's a lot of different factors that we take into account when doing that five-year model to project that revenue, and we don't just keep it flat at two percent if we know new businesses are coming on, so.
Well, and we all hope and expect the tourism fund to keep going up and up, but there's always, you don't know. I mean, and isn't it cheaper to spend preventative spending over, after-the-fact spending?
Yes, historically, what we've noticed, it is cheaper to do it...
You know what I mean, I just didn't...
Preventative maintenance is much better than reactive maintenance.
Reactive, that's the word. After reactive. You have anything to add, Marshall? Artie?
Well, so hypothetically, Kendall, let's just say this, if this were voted down tonight, would you come back to us with a Plan B? Is there a Plan B? Is there a Plan B? Have you thought through that yet?
Yes, we have, we have thought of Plan B. And really, that's, that's in our focus group discussions of, you know, what happens, right? If we're not approved for funding, there's, what do we do? And it's either, either we, like to say, kick the can down the road with capital. We push capital down the road further and take a chance, roll the dice on failures. Or we reduce our level of service operationally, right? We have regulatory requirements we must meet, and that's, you know, various items throughout the system. But it may mean, mean that we're not inspecting our sewer lines as much. We're not spending as many dollars towards proactive maintenance. We're not flushing as much as what we should. And that all reduces costs, but it also produces that level of service and potentially causes customer complaints and that as well. And we've done really, we've worked really hard at elevating our customer service throughout the city and trying to, trying to work at creating the best system we can as possible. The really plain fact is, is you either cut capital out or you have to find another funding source for it.
We're currently on a rate increase model, though, correct? So what is it, if this were, let's just, again, if this were just hypothetically voted down tonight, what would be the increase for next year as opposed to 20% residential?
If it was voted down, then, then it would be no increase next year.
Right, I can, I can probably answer that. That would be up to you at the end of the day. So I just wanted to ask Kendall, and thank you for, I didn't get recognized.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think you have that right.
Thank you, sir, thank you. We just recently had an emergency experience, right? Where, could you shed a little bit of light on how much that was costing us per hour, per day?
Yes.
To deal with an urgent main break?
Yes, I appreciate that opportunity because this is, this was quite the experience for my career here at Branson, but we often experience forced main breaks. And this is on a forced main that we have pushed down the road for several years to have it replaced. And this is in the Fall Creek Valley. It's roughly a third of our treatment plant flow for Cooper Creek. And we, we've experienced multiple breaks on this sewer line. We're actually under watch by DNR for this sewer main itself. We've, if you look at our violation history, you'll see multiple violations for this basin and DNR because of forced main breaks. And, and so this forced main was actually underneath Highway 165. The pipe broke underneath the highway. And we spent three days on this forced main break. And we had to, there was no way for us to bypass pump that lift station. So we had to hire outside help with pump trucks. And if you can imagine trying to haul a third of your treatment plant flow from pump trucks, it was a huge feat. And I'm looking at Ethan up here because my assistant director was in charge of that end of the project while I was working on the actual repair itself. But Ethan was sweating it. We have a, we have a million gallon equalization tank at, at Lift Station 21 to help buy us some time. But there was many times the pump trucks couldn't keep up, and that flow started coming up in the manhole right next to the creek and it was within the foot of overflow. And then we turned on the pumps to pump it into that equalization basin just long enough to get us to caught up, get caught up a little bit. And, but we were pumping 24/7. We were spending $1,000 an hour per pump truck. So we had well over $100,000 spent in pumping cost of outside help with, with, with that event. We spent, we're still working on the dollars, but we're pushing $300,000 just for that repair. So that's, that's just to give you the example of what kind of costs we've been up against and pushing projects down the road because of funding. I mean, there was one time that, you know, we didn't have any tourism dollars for projects. The tourism fund was taxed, and, and we did not have the funds to do projects. We were being told, no, no, we don't have funds, no, we don't have funds. And so pushing those projects down the road causes issues like these.
So with that main break, I'm assuming there was people without service or?
No, people had service. They still flush. We just had to catch it.
Oh.
And so, and the byproduct of not catching it is, it ends up in Fall Creek. And with the main break, we, we had a significant amount of fluid that ended up in Fall Creek, and we had a fish kill. And that's why we get the violations.
Hmm.
And that's the other thing I just want to remind everybody is when these kinds of incidents happen, that's when the regulatory agencies come in hard and heavy, and then they start to put requirements on a municipality where the thou shalt by this date do X, Y, Z to prevent this from happening again to protect the environment and human health, right? Nobody wants sewer flowing into waterways, especially in the Ozarks. So again, I just want to kind of bring it, the conversation back around. I appreciate the talk about percentages, but I always believe it's important to remind people percent, 15% of what, right? And so the overall impact is going to be around, I think, was it $7 and some cents?
Yeah, for combined. Yeah, water, sewer combined.
And again, I don't mean to minimize that, but I do think perspective is really important when we're having these conversations. And I hope you guys have heard and seen Kendall and his team, and he's got a history very well established in the city of pinching every possible penny and being as creative as possible to leverage other funding sources as far as grants as well. Their team is always on the lookout for eligible grants for us to use too. So it's always more fun with other people's money, and Kendall's team is very good at that. And I'm very hopeful you all will, will support this request.
I'd like to give a quick example of that, Kathy, is in our water treatment facility, we had the filter rehabs for Meadows Treatment. We, we spent, I believe it was close to $80,000 on, on that project in-house, whereas if we hired it out, it would have cost us almost $400,000. So our staff in-house took care of that. And it sounds simple, but if you actually come to the treatment plant, I can show you what they had to do, and I can send some pictures to you. But it's amazing what our staff was able, was capable of doing and removing all the carbon and sand out of these filters, one by one, a lot of handwork, a lot of backaches, and, and then, and then put the material back in there, and we saved a ton of money. So these guys are doing that every day. Our staff, it's, it's a team. Our staff do a phenomenal job of being good stewards of the dollars you allow us to have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just for example, if, if we wanted to keep the overall increased dollars the same and try to lessen the impact on the residential side of things, you know, so that you get the same budget, but we, we change the allocation between residential and commercial in order to lower the burden on the residences. You know, I, some quick math says the total of the residences' increases would be about And the bulk of it is on the commercial side in terms of absolute dollars. So if we wanted to simply cut the residential increase in half to say about 7, 8%, and then shift that $150,000 or so dollars over to the commercial side, that would seem to be a very small additional percent increase on commercial and would save our residents the double whammy of utility increases in the same year.
So I'll give you a quick example of that. So on the water side, instead of a 20% increase for residential, which equates to roughly $220,000 in revenue generation, if we cut it down to 5% and did 25% for commercial, we would come out to the same, one point, a little over 1.1 million in revenue. So commercial would go up 5% and residential would drop down to?
What's the sewer amount on that?
Let me go to sewer real quick.
Residential sewer?
Uh.
The increased dollars?
Oh, the actual dollar amount like for bill? Or are you talking about?
Total, total for residential sewer increase with the proposed rate change. What's the total increase for sewer?
So the 15, 15 for residential and 15% for commercial, it's, it's 1.17 million.
No, just the residential side?
Oh, on the residential side, it's roughly $250,000 in revenue at a 15% increase.
Okay, so we've got between those two for residential, we've got about $470,000 of increase. Does that sound right?
Yeah, about 450, yeah.
Yeah. So if we cut that in half, those rate increases in half for residential and redistributed it on commercial, it doesn't seem like it's, to Kathy's point, much more of a burden on the commercial dollar-wise, and yet we save our residences the double increases from both electric and water. Significant increases.
So the, I'm sorry to cut you off there. The last three years we have done that, we've had residential at 3% for both water and sewer, and commercials took the burden of that. What we did in our, we do a study every year of approximately 90 different entities, and we compare water sewer billings for those other entities and see where residential falls for 3/4 inch meters and see where 2-inch meters fall for the commercial side. And, and what we've noticed with putting the burden on, the majority, the majority of the burden on the commercial side, we are now starting to leave that mid-range comparison, competitiveness in the commercial side, and where we're getting closer to the high-end side. So it's that balance of also with visitors, obviously that cost is going to go to, you know, increased ticket prices or whatever it may be to whatever product they're selling or whatever to make up for that. And that's economically, that can pose an issue too as well, I suspect. But that is one method, yes, we could, could do that.
Anybody in the audience who want to speak? Let's hear what you have to say, Alex Williams.
Good evening, board and team.
If we don't like how it's going, I'm going to gavel you.
Okay, that sounds good.
Go ahead, just go ahead.
So some context I think matters because one of the pleasures I have is serving on the Finance Committee, and our principal role is to help the board make sound decisions on accounting procedures and things like that matter. Well, in 2023 for FY24, I got to look at the utility rates model for the first time, and a conversation was had, very similar to this one. We've done a study of 80 to 90 entities, we're artificially low, our infrastructure's degraded, the tourism tax is tapped. But the conversation stopped during that Finance Committee meeting whenever the mayor had asked the staff to look at those numbers and go back because we're going on the confidence of the residents who vote for this tax. It almost seems as if we think we're entitled to always budget for the tourism tax, but it's at the will of the voters that that stays around. And so I find it just interesting when we're looking at that, that it shouldn't be looked at as subsidy, and I certainly want to, wouldn't want to go to a resident and say, hey, I mean, it's only a couple bucks. I mean, if it's just a couple of bucks, is the city prepared to write a check to subsidize Mr. and Mrs. Smith for that rate change difference? That's how I look at that because we're already in a financially constrained environment, and to be tone, not tone deaf, that's not fair to all of you, but to not look at what's going on in context and not come up with a creative solution, I wouldn't want to go after the one thing that we're leading on and reduce costs in a fiscally constrained environment for our residents. In '23, we met twice. We came in, we didn't accept the utility rates model, staff brought it back, we accepted it. The condition of the capital was the same at that point. The next year, in 2024, we got the same briefings. We were told, you know, we meet all code compliance, local, state, federal since 2011, and we didn't, and we did not propose a 20% increase at that time, which those numbers haven't been called out yet, but they're in the staff report. Going from a 3% adjusted rate when it was proposed to be 10 in 2023 to a 3% in 2024 to a 20% in 2025 to the resident is not a good way to build confidence. Obviously, a pump doesn't know the difference between my kid brushing their teeth or flushing the toilet 10 times versus the commercial customer. The staff report for the last three years has called out that 75% of the load to our system is commercial, and we have had a splay between the residential and commercial rates over the last three years. So there was a line of demarcation drawn out this year, and I noticed that in committee. Obviously, people sometimes have a hard time meeting, but getting the committee together and having this first discussion about the utility rates model on September 11th, the first time I was apprised of the plan for this utility rates model was a printed copy in my binder. And with that, it wasn't available in the HTML agenda. That was talked about. This isn't the first time I'd brought it up. I brought it up during that committee, and I think it's important that that board have a chance to have that discussion because it had been respected in 2023, and I don't know if it's just the absence of the mayor this go-around, but there is a line of demarcation there, and nothing has changed. Yes, there's utility rates increases, but the, the infrastructure is still the same. Eight to 10 million people are still coming to Branson, and if 3,000 residents need to bear the, the load demand for 75% commercial, it's just, it's not making sense to the average resident. And for me, I have a little bit more purview because I get to sit in on the Finance Committee, but it seems as if, you know, I had one paragraph in the staff report to look at, and the reason why I had any time to prepare for that discussion was because I arrived 30 minutes early and found a printed copy in my binder. I'm not here to pick a fight, I want to be a team player, but these are just the, these are just the details that are to the, to us. And in an administration that values transparency, those details matter. And so when we look to the residents and say, hey, we have your back, we're going to do everything we can to reduce it, I certainly want, want to look at them and say, we're subsidizing you, you're not subsidizing anybody, they voted for it, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to do the best we can to preserve that because our, we have an elderly population, we have a fiscally constrained environment, and if we're able to help fund that couple dollar change, then I think it would be acceptable. But if we don't have a plan for that, I don't think it's acceptable. Again, grateful to work with all of you. That's just, you know, one of your dedicated civil servants on a committee, and those are the details that I've been apprised to with the rates model.
Anyone else? Representative Sots, come on down.
You're on The Price is Right.
That's it, baby.
Okay. I don't know if The Price is Right this time. Okay, I appreciate what Kendall has done, and I told him I was going to speak on this prior to the meeting. As aldermen in particular, you have to look to your residents in your wards first. Businesses as well, but you look to the residences. And the increase of 20%, and I think it was said before, the average increase is going to be about $7 on a water bill. I don't think people are going to necessarily complain about that. So I like the way it was presented, and Kendall, you know, that's a lot better than what we think of as a 20% increase, seven bucks a month, okay? But on top of the electric rate increase at the possibility of 40%, and now we're looking at a 20%, and based on the increase in 8% next year, 5% the next, 8% the next, people are going to be paying by 2030 50% more for sewer and water than they are right now. They're going to be paying more than 50% for their electric bill than they are right now. I'm meeting on Friday with Rod West. He's the new CEO of Algaquin Power. I'm going to meet him in Springfield, and we're going to have a very frank conversation about this supposed near 40% increase because it can't, it's not sustainable. We're going to lose the middle class if we keep raising rates, especially for necessities like water, sewer, and power. I do like Alderman Schultz's possible idea of a lesser rate increase presented over time. I do understand the infrastructure needs, and if I could, if I had a time machine, I would go back to 2015 and tar and feather most of the people that sat in your positions for kicking and like everything else that happened during that time period. They kicked it down the road, and you guys have to solve problem for inept public officials that we had back in the mid to early 2000s. But we have to think about the residents. If by 2030, they're going to have a 50% increase in water, a 50% increase in sewer, 50% in electric, and just say they're renting, they're renting an apartment, well, the rents are going to have to be raised. Are wages going to go up again? And I'm not saying we should put the burden on businesses either, but a 20% increase, and then the next year a 5, and the next year an 8, why can't we look at a simple 5%? A simple, maybe a 7% rather than putting the burden on the citizens of Branson? That's just a question.
Kathy, have something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. I, I just want to reemphasize how we do put residents first in all the things that we're doing. And it's important also to keep in mind, as we've had internal deliberations about this and how to share the cost, is that the higher and higher we keep jacking up businesses in Branson-- is that the higher and higher we keep jacking up businesses in Branson, the less competitive and attractive we are as a place to do business, to locate a business, to expand a business. And so that's on our minds as well as we talk about the TIF development that's just happened. We're trying to retain new businesses and attract new businesses. And it's easy when there's not a room full of business owners in here who are waiving their utility bill and saying, why isn't this being more equitably spread, right? And equitably is going to be in the eye of the beholder, understandably. But to say that, we've actually done it the way you've just presented, Representative, over the past several years. And it is artificially suppressing the rates compared to all of our neighbors. We are way down when it comes to what residents actually pay. And in the case of the water service in particular, not all of our residents get to experience that benefit. Two-thirds are served by either Missouri American Water or Public Water District, right? Number one or three. And so there's only one-third of our residents that are actually, you know, receiving that benefit. And it's wonderful that we're able to do it. Again, ultimately, this is a policy decision. And if this board decides that they want to take that same dollar figure and spread it out differently, more on the backs of businesses like what we've done the last several years.
And I'm not advocating for a business increase either. A percentage increase to lessen that, well, not necessarily. The board could vote that there are going to be no increases. When I meet with Liberty on Friday, I'm going to ask that they bring that down from a 40% increase down to maybe a 12. You know, I had said before, when I was here, I said, I sense a bait and switch. We're not doing that here. But with Liberty, that they put it artificially high so they can come back and be magnanimous and present it at a lower rate. I think they were doing that all the time.
That could be. But that's, we don't have, you know, right? We don't have any control over what Liberty's doing.
Sure, but we're looking at the individual consumer. We're looking at the homeowner. And they afford. We're losing, we're going to lose the middle class if we keep jacking up things that they need to live. They need water, they need sewer, they need electric. And we've put that burden on the tourism tax, but now we're tiffing again. We're tiffing again. We're going to be losing revenue in the short run that could have went to something like this, something like the infrastructure that we need.
No, I, and I know we're not supposed to go back. We're not supposed to be going back and forth. And I appreciate the latitude from the chairman here. But I just wanted to say, if I, we don't, this entire city staff that's been doing these deliberations are hardcore fiscal conservatives, right? The very DNA that makes me up is very fiscally conservative and super careful and cautious and very conscientious about negative impacts to our citizenry. Kendall runs numbers 12 ways from Sunday, up one side and down the other, and does that in collaboration with us too.
Does an excellent job, right?
He does, thank you for that. But I will tell you, if we're not able to get the monetary increase that we're looking for, I have no other choice than to come to my board and say, which projects and which repairs and which maintenance things should not get done? Because I don't want that responsibility. I have a responsibility, as does Kendall, to make sure that you can wet your toothbrush confidently in the morning with clean, safe drinking water, that toilets will flush when they're supposed to, that basements won't back up with raw sewage, that we don't have fish kills in the rivers, the lakes, and the streams here, that not only is a very bad impact on the economy, but potentially our fishery, which is a huge tourism draw. And if we have a water incident, right, a failure at our treatment plant because of delayed or deferred maintenance, God forbid, the stain that would put on our destination as not having safe drinking water for people to come and visit. So to me, this is just as imperative of a service that we offer as public safety, which is the health of our visitors and the health of our residents. And $7 a month, to me, is well worth that investment. But that's my take. And I'm not ultimately the decision-maker when it comes to the policy direction. But I am imploring my board, and I hope I've got enough of a track record established, to know I don't come with frivolous requests. I come with real, serious needs. And I'm always going to put the needs to protect Branson's reputation and our citizenry first.
Thank you. Hey, Mayor, were you wanting to chime in?
Well, Representative Sots, has he done?
Well, he's.
Yeah, I'm more or less done based on what you say, Mr. Mayor. And then I'll see if I'm done.
Unless you have a question for him, sir.
That sounds like a political response there.
It is.
I have, I have several things. I do want to go back to Marshall's initial question. And that is, it sounds like we're taking into account all the expenses and, as Kendall said, the projected revenues based on the past. But if I heard it correctly, there is no consideration of the increase of revenues from the developments that are in place. And I think a quick, small example would be, I know we had projections of what the revenues were going to be at Branson Meadows for that TIF. So in those projections, there had to be projected increase in tourism tax, Tandy County sewer tax, the retail tax. So I know Kendall says, and I appreciate it from Kendall's world, Kendall doesn't, isn't in the position of projecting potential increases in the sewer and water rates over the years to come. But I'd like to think we have other departments or Ben who can make those projections because it does sound like we're applying all the possible expenses and not taking into consideration any of those potential revenues. I'd also like to raise the question about the, Kathy, I appreciate the fact that 20% only equates to $7 a month increase. $7 a month on top of the electric increases. I'm going to tell you, I live in a neighborhood with a lot of senior citizens. And those that are on fixed income, the $7 here, the $15, $20 there, the $40 here. I, I just think it affects those that are in our community that are on fixed income. It may only be $7, but it's, it's, it just seems like a lot all at one time. The question Marshall raised was, instead of 20% this year, and then an 8%, if I understood it, 8% next year, 5% the year following, and then whatever it was, 8% after that. And I, I respect our financial department. But logic says we could level off. I don't know why we can't level off that 20%. If I had time with the numbers in a calculator, I think I could come up with whatever the average would be. Maybe it's 9% over the next 10 years. It seems like it would be less than that based on the projections down the road. 20, if I heard right, Kendall said from 2030 on, they are projecting a 5% annual increase. Well, 2030, based on the budget we're going into, is only four years down the road. So it doesn't fit in my brain that in four years, we can project out a 5% annual increase and have 7% or 8%, 5% increases over these next couple of years and have to absorb 20% in one year. So I just struggle with, I struggle with that math. I would like to think that as we do these forecasts, that we could apply some of these. If we don't have increase in sewer income and water rates income and tourism tax income, then it doesn't make sense to do more developments if we're not going to have increased revenues on those fronts. So for now, I will give my time back to Representative Sots.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that.
I think Kathy would like, do you mind if Kathy responds to the mayor real quick?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your comments. And you and I have had a brief conversation about this. All those projections that you talk about, when you talk about what we're looking to have projections to be over the next several years are just projections, right? So I want to remind everybody of that. And one of the previous speakers talked about how two, three years ago, they didn't see this 20% projection. Well, that's because we're being hit with a $400,000 increase from Liberty Utilities, just like everybody else is, right? So we have to pay that bill as well, as well as chemical costs, component costs, et cetera, that are just staggering. So we weren't anticipating, right? Because you don't have a crystal ball. We do the best we can to project conservatively. And those are the numbers that you're seeing, Mayor. So when you say 8% and then 2030, who knows what it's going to be in 2030? I mean, can we just be real for a minute? All we can do is kind of project and use very conservative numbers. And I know you guys put a lot of responsibility on us to be conservative and not bet on there's a giant pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, right? We don't know if that extra flush tourism money is going to be there for certain. So we're just being conservative. Now, God willing, all those things come to pass, and we do have more coming in than what we anticipated in the projections today, two years from now, and that we've got more money. That's great. Then an 8% increase won't even have to be talked about. Maybe it's two, right? But for now, all we're trying to do is provide a smoother glide path so that there's not a jolt at the end for our customers. And again, I don't want to minimize the $7 for a combined sewer and water bill, right? I don't want to minimize that. But I have to tell you that this is the real world of, we have to pay for the things and the services that we're doing in order to provide safe drinking water and clean, you know, water bodies and not having sewer in basements. We owe that to the public too, besides affordable rates. So we're trying to balance both. And it is a very difficult tightrope that we walk because we don't want to overburden our citizens ever. But again, you know, if you guys decide, I'm hopeful that you fund the amount we're looking for because we weren't anticipating we would need those dollars. So if you say wait and kick it down the can further, well, then I'm going to show you a list of projects, I will, and ask you, which things should we not do? Because honestly, I don't want that responsibility. I don't want to have happen down at, was it Roark Valley, happen again. And we've got a $500,000 repair that we weren't expecting. We have to come back to you. And I don't want to sound like fear mongering because we just went through it. That's really what we're dealing with. So at that now, I'll be quiet.
I'm sorry, Representative Sots.
Yeah, just to finish it up, I think the city administrator just mentioned that word, fear. I don't operate on that level that we're going to have to do something based on something terrible that might happen in the future. We live in the here and now. We know prices may go up, prices may go down. We know that we're going to have infrastructure needs in the future, and we may have them right now. But I have to stand up for the residents. A 20% increase is too high. A 40% increase in electricity from a Canadian company is too high. We're going to work on lowering that on Friday. I'm, we have to stand up for our citizens, and we're going to lose the middle class if we keep raising rates. 20% is too high.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? If Liberty wasn't doing this at this moment, would you still be opposing this rate increase?
At a 20%, yes.
Because we can't really base our.
20% for anything.
I don't think we can base our decisions as protecting the city based off what other companies are doing at that time. And I think it's terrible what they're doing. I think it's way out of line.
Sure.
But like, I guess my question was, if we don't get this increase, are we in trouble as far as, and I'm not for raising, believe me, if we don't have these, if the increase doesn't go up and we don't have these funds and something bad happens, are we in trouble? Can we, like she said, is there stuff we can't fix or we can't do if we don't have this extra increase?
Yeah, well, capital projects because we won't have the increase to fund those capital projects. And that's what goes first. And in our current rate model where we have it, as Kendall stated earlier, you do see a decrease in our reserve funds. And any major project, if you have a major failure, will completely drain those reserves. And we're required to keep 20% reserves for all operating costs. And we're currently, even with this rate model, we're dipping into those reserve funds.
I'm good here.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Artie?
I thought the suggestion that Glenn made wasn't to do away with the rate increase and remove any money. It was just to transfer to the commercial side from the residential side. So we're not talking about removing any money so that we could still do the capital projects.
I mean, you guys weren't, but the speakers were, right? So I mean, that's what I heard, is that they didn't like the raise, you know, the increase.
Well, well, I'm just, I mean, I know, I mean, yeah, yeah. How many, how many businesses do you say we supply, 991?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, I mean, are they going to be ticked off if we just keep putting more on them? I mean, where do you find the happy, where's the happy medium or the line? I don't know the answer. I'm just asking a question. I mean, I own a commercial property. Alex, they own a commercial property. Jeff has a commercial property. I mean, where do you find that happy medium? I mean, yeah, somebody's going to have to pay for it. But if you keep pushing it that way, maybe they don't want to have a piece of property here and do. I don't, I mean, I'm just, I don't know.
My only retort to that, Clay, is that it seems like this is a very sort of black and white policy discussion that we're having right here. So in other words, to me, if this is a policy discussion, having that discussion of whether we're putting it off to the businesses or whether we're putting it off to the residents is different than what I have in front of me right now. Because what I have in front of me right now is sort of yes or no increase at all, you know? I would, I would, I guess I would appreciate the ability to have that discussion of the policy discussion of switching it over to the commercial side. But right now, I don't feel like I'm really able to have that discussion because it's like, increase it or don't increase it, basically.
Marshall, you're always welcome to make an amendment to what we have in front of you. So if you all give us the direction per Glenn's suggestion that you want to see a certain percent of the dollar figure that we were asking for be towards the residential side and the other rest of it go to commercial, you can make that amendment tonight if you'd like. And again, I'm not opposed to that because ultimately, truly, I defer to you as the policymakers, right? And then we are the implementers. That's our role here. I'm just trying to give you the strongest guidance that I can. When we talk about your question, Clay, where is that balance? Well, we thought we had a balance here, and you can disagree and say, no, you don't. And we want you to do it different and go back to whatever percent you want it to be residential and the other rest of it goes to commercial. That's your purview.
I appreciate that, Kathy. And my only thing is that I don't have those numbers in front of me necessarily. That's my only thing, and doing this on the fly. As far as what percentage is going to be on commercial, what percentage is going to be on residential? That was my only thing.
I mean, I think, I think if we wanted to, I don't think that'd be, I mean, we know the numbers. We just need to know how we want to divide it, right?
So I have the model pulled up on my iPad here. I can do it on the fly if it's, I understand, yeah.
Hey, Alderman Schultz, you wanted to, oh, so I'm sorry, Ralph, you hadn't spoken yet.
I just wanted to make a comment. I mean, obviously, you know, as a board, there's three things that we do. Public safety, utilities, and quality of life. And they all go hand in hand. And all of those things have costs. And it's not incumbent on one entity to burden that cost. That burden has to be divided amongst the community as a whole. And that's what I think staff has done, is they've looked at it and albeit, you know, when you say it's a 20% increase, but again, 20% of what, you know? And when that, that 20% of that number is low and the overall increase in water and sewer ends up being $7, you know, again, is that substantial? In some areas, it is. But I implore you to think beyond our operation here because our energy costs are going up, our chemical costs are going up. And we've all toured the facilities. And our staff and Kendall's staff does a superb job of putting out the highest-quality utilities that they can on the budget that they do. And they make adjustments on their own. In fact, every department in our city inhouses things in order to stretch those dollars. So we're doing all of those things. And we've done it to the extent that they can't do it anymore. Like, they just don't have the bandwidth to do it anymore. So that burden has to be swathed across. to do it anymore. So that burden has to be swathed across the community now. And that's the point we're at. And again, going back to the conversation even three years ago, we knew this moment was coming, and here it is. And so who do you burden? Do you burden the commercial businesses in an attempt to lessen the burden on the community, or the residents? As Kathy mentioned, 2/3 of our residents aren't on city water anyway, you know? So they're actually paying at a higher rate. So they're not experiencing that offset that tourism tax has done up to this point. So I think we're, you know, I mean, we're definitely at a point where this decision is going to be uncomfortable for a lot of people. But at the same time, the uncomfortable thing is to kick it down the road or try to defer it to a different time, because we're already hitting points where our facilities and our equipment are hitting their life mark, you know? I mean, we've seen it up here. And that's why we're having to do these things, because as Representative Sights said, previous administrations have just been inactive, and here we are being very proactive. But if we don't do this properly, then we fall into the same situation that we're going to have to defer capital projects that we all stood up here and campaigned on to get done. And we're finally to the point where we're getting traction and getting them done. And now we're looking at, oh, well, maybe, maybe we're not going to do those things now, because it's uncomfortable. But it's reality. And, you know, groceries are going up, all those things are going up. And, you know, Walmart doesn't consider what your income is when they raise their prices, and you still go there anyway. I mean, we're at least taking and giving a good consideration as to how the residents are going to be impacted. And I trust that Kendall and our staff have exhaustively looked at how that impact would be and minimized it as much as possible. So that's where I'm--
Alderman Schultz.
Yeah, let me just preface my comments so you understand. I pay for water through the city also, but I pay at the commercial rate for water where I am, as do many other owners. So, you know, I think I can speak from the commercial side, at least from that perspective. The question you asked, Mr. Chairman, of one of the speakers was, would you feel differently if there wasn't electric increase? And the answer for that is absolutely you'd feel differently. You'd have no increase to the residential rates then, because we've baked $400,000 of increased electric bill into this financial model that's driving up the rates. And so if that wasn't there, I'd quickly argue, well, then there's no residential rate increase, because it's about dollar for dollar the same, right? So, and I'd also, I come back to this issue, you know, we're kind of forecasting this electrical rate increase in, even though we all suspect it's going to come in at a far lower value. But we're not baking in any increase, zero, in tourism dollars. Just bothers me, because--
Yeah, no, we have projected that in 2028 to see that increase, but with new infrastructure, it takes a while to receive that revenue.
No, I'm not talking about, what have you baked in for 2026 for tourism tax increase?
We have a 2% increase, because we are conservative when it comes to revenue, because that's all we're seeing. It's not COVID times. We're not seeing 12% increases in these things, and we're not seeing a huge decrease. We're seeing a 2% steady increase in revenue right now for sales tax and tourism tax.
And it, you know, some quick math on that says that about a 4% increase in tourism tax would strip off the increase that we're asking our residents to pay.
And we can over-project revenue, but then what happens when we come in under revenue, and then we eat into these reserves, and then you don't have it when you need the project? So that's what will happen, and that's an option.
It would give us a reason to delay this rate increase for a year, right? At a risk of, I mean, we're talking about $470,000 is what's at risk with the residential rate increase.
And then we'll just dip into those reserves that we're required to have, and if any major project comes up, then we'll be under the required reserve amount if we do not do the rate increase.
Sure. And then the following year, if we found out we had to do that, then we can talk about a different rate increase for the residences. But at least then, we'll have taken into account real tourism dollars increase. I mean, we're spending, you know, all this money on marketing. We've got a new marketing team. Everybody's pumped about the way marketing's going. And then to be uber-conservative about the increase in taxes seems a little bit, I appreciate being conservative, I truly do, but it seems like we're tipping the scales too far the other way. Especially when we take a couple of big jumps that we don't need to take on the residences right away. We might have to eventually, but I'm not convinced we need them right now.
Is that it? Y'all up?
Well, to that point, I think that's what we're trying to avoid, is that big jump, that big blip. And that's what they factor this for, was so that down the road, there isn't that big jump. And I think, you know, their projection is, that's probably what happened if something catastrophic happened.
I don't know. I mean, I appreciate, I mean, everybody's got great points. I mean, I mean, I try to make decisions up here like it was my business, even though it's, this is not, the city's not a business. But, you know, I have to spend money to make money. I don't like to. I don't want to spend $39,000 on a generator switch. I don't want to spend $80,000 on a new LED board, but I have to do all those things to stay relevant and where I need to be. So I look at it, and I don't want to, yeah, it might be $84 a month for the residents' increase, but, and I'm not taking that lightly, but if the city doesn't have the extra revenue to keep the toilets flushing and the sewer from backing up on all that, I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I kind of look at it in that sense. That's just for me.
The way I'm kind of looking at it, Clay, is, because we heard it at the beginning of this discussion about, you know, should, should the businesses sort of kind of carry this a little bit more? And to me, it's not really the little old lady that's in her home that's kind of, you know, bearing the burden of a lot of these increases. It's really our tourism economy, you know? That's what's so unique about Branson. And I think that's what, we've had that sort of tourism tax in place to shoulder that burden, so that, so having said that rationale, I would like to propose an amendment that we keep the same--
I'm so sorry. Hang on, just, so we're actually still in the--
Yeah, we're still in the hearing.
Hearing portion. So it's not on the floor at this moment.
Okay.
Okay, well, should we close the public hearing? Should we close the public hearing? Anybody else have anything to say while we're here? Public hearing is closed. You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6599. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. We have a motion, a second. Any members of the board wishing to speak? We spoke, we spoke, we spoke. Anyone in the audience wanting to speak on this? No. All right. Go ahead, Marshall.
Okay, I would like to propose an amendment that we keep the same revenue structure, but shift the percentage to the commercial side and make that math work.
Bless you. Okay, thank you. So what is the percent that you would like us to have the residents' portion be? What is an acceptable percent increase? I think, what were we looking at hopefully being able to do this year when we looked at it last year, Kendall? Was it three or five?
So in previous years, we had 3% increases, because the model was based off of a projected 3% cost increase for operations and maintenance from year to year. We've increased that to 5%. So that's why I have in later years, 5%.
So 5% would have been what we were planning to raise for this year?
At a minimum.
Okay. So is it acceptable for you, Marshall, as part of your motion, that the residential portion will be 5%? And then whatever percent that leaves will be the commercial percent?
Why would that be?
I don't know. We'll figure it out. I mean, as long as we're getting the same revenue dollars, we'll see what the burden would be. Well, what would, is there a way, I hate doing this to you on the fly, because this is a lot of pressure to put on a director.
I got you.
It's definitely worth it, as long as the correct information--
Could we finish the motion, though, please? There's a half motion on the floor and not a second?
Well, we don't know what--
We're trying to finish it, because we're trying to come up with the formula here real quick.
So on the water side, it'd be 5% for residential and 25% for commercial. On the sewer side--
Ooh. I just want to say ooh once more.
It'd be 20% on commercial. So 5 on residential and 20 on sewer for commercial.
That's my motion.
So what is it?
Can we restate that motion, just--
Yeah, Kendall, we need affirmation here. 5% on water, just on water, do water first.
Water would be 5% for residential and 25% for commercial.
Okay, 25%.
And then sewer?
Sewer would be 5% for residential and 20% for commercial.
Yes. 5% for residential on water, 25% for commercial on water. Give me the other two numbers again, Kendall, please.
Sewer would be residential at 5% increase and commercial at 20% increase.
So sewer, 5%, residential, commercial, 20%, sewer.
Just ask a question. Oh, okay. So if they were both 20% before, and you're knocking one down by 15%, don't you logically have to add that 15% onto the other guy? No?
No, because your commercial produces 75% of your revenue.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's why. Okay, thank you for the clarity.
Okay. So that's the numbers? Okay. You want to, let's have a discussion on the amendment. Is that the happy medium? Is there a more happier medium? I'm just asking for a friend. Public comment? Any aldermen?
So again?
Oh, you want to speak, Jeff? Let's hear from the, let's hear from the Jeff Reynolds.
Yeah, Jeff Reynolds, Keller Williams Real Estate. I just think there could be a better way. I mean, you guys aren't in full agreement here. I mean, 5% for residential makes sense, but that's all, if the businesses are paying 75% already, isn't that the same mindset of taxing the rich more? And there just has to be a better way. I mean, Glenn Schultz thinks about this stuff, and he's saying that we haven't factored in the increase of the tax. So, I mean, just to arbitrarily increase that amount, and isn't our town kind of have a reputation for not being business-friendly? Would this not enhance that a little bit more?
If I had a bell, I'd have dinged it twice just now, Jeff. Ding ding. And that's a good thing.
And I think that's what Kathy tried to explain, was that, you know, we have always passed the burden on to the businesses. And at what point does that constraint become a strain, you know? And why are we always hitting them up?
Well-- Does anyone else have a comment from out there? No? Oh, Representative Sights.
It sounds like, numbers-wise, you're trying to find a way to get the same piece of pie, or the same pie that you were going for in the beginning. Why not lowering, we're not going to get that money. We're not going to get a 20% increase. We don't have to, if we're doing a 5% residential, I mean, that seems to be fine. That seems to be the norm, increasing residentially every year, every other year. But why do we have to put the burden on the businesses? Are we still going for that whole piece of pie? Let's lower it for the businesses, too. And we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have everything we want on that board, but that's life, too, because we want businesses to come to Branson. We don't want to put a 25% increase on their water and sewer rates. We're just not going to be able to get, because we don't want a 20% increase, everything that's up there that they're asking for. That's my comment.
I guess my question then would be to the board, if that's your druthers, not to, I mean, to use Representative Sights, which things should we not do? I mean, really, that's just the reality of it, is that's what it comes down to, is then I would need your direction on which projects do we not do. So again, these are real needs, and I've probably said too much already tonight, but, yeah.
Yeah, well, again, you know, I think Representative Sights is not getting the full complexion of, it's not a matter of, we just want a rate increase. Like, this is a need. It's a need for the city in order to continue to provide the level of utility service that we've been providing. And simply because our continued costs have gone up, just as everyone else's costs have gone up. So it's just, we just can't absorb that. And so this is the balance, and that's what they diligently worked on, is to present a balance. And again, I go back to 20% of what, and that, from a residential standpoint, it's a smaller impact. But again, they've had the luxury of having that tourism tax carry that burden, and that can no longer be because of the increase of service and the increase of supplies and products and chattel. So, yeah.
Representative, I mean, who are you? Alderman Schultz.
Ooh, I got upgraded there for--
Yeah, that was easy.
You know, I still, I appreciate the amendment, because I think it's kind of getting to the, to one of my issues here, is that we can't put it on the residences. But I still, I still have the feeling, and I appreciate the fact, there's a list of projects. All project lists have priorities. So we could certainly go to the bottom of the list and say there might be a few things that just might not happen. But I put the might in there, because I don't think it's as absolute as Kathy suggested. I think the might in there is still the fact that the rate increase that you baked in at $400,000 for electric is not a given. It's a possibility, but it's not a given. So there's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars of variance in cost right there, which is probably ticks off a couple items on the bottom of that project list, I would bet, not having seen the prioritized project list. And the other thing, I'll just keep coming back to it, is, you know, at the rate we're supposed to be growing as a community, I think we're being too conservative on tourism tax as it relates to the forward years and the model. I get it that we've got the current year, the 2026 year, that we've got to address and have a solid plan for it. But the model doesn't, I don't think, contemplate what we're trying to do overall as a community, with all the investments we're making, with all the tax credits we just gave to ensure growth in the community, with all the advertising we do. I think, for a long-term model, we're just being too conservative on the tax side of it. I wonder if we're at a point in this discussion where we should ask the staff to perhaps prioritize that expense project list for 2026, so that we can look at the bottom end of that list and decide, as alderman, to Kathy's question, if we can't get all that funding, what would we chop off? I think that's a fair question, and I think, as alderman, we should take a look at that, because I think we're kind of stuck in a spot none of us are really comfortable with right now. So I'm looking to see if there's some agreement from the aldermen on the concept of perhaps postponing and ask for a little bit more detail on a prioritized project list. And maybe it would also be a good time to finalize the calculations on the proposed shift of residential to commercial. shift of residential to commercial because it's such a significant calculation. I think we want to be absolutely sure as to what's happening there. So I wonder if there's an agreement on this board that we delay this to our next meeting for staff to have a chance to grind through it a little bit more and present some additional details.
Well... Yeah, I mean, I don't like the 20% on commercial. So, I mean, if we were writing on this motion, I'd probably be a no, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'll withdraw my second.
Let's just table it.
So I...
And that's what we'll do, and I probably should have said this an hour ago, is that we should table it. And then if you guys all want to have a meeting and you want us to justify the validity and the importance and timeliness of the projects in front of you, we're more than happy to do that. And then you can tell us, like I said, which things do you not want to do? So that's your purview. So I would ask that someone would make that motion, please.
I think, just so that it doesn't come off as such a defensive comment, I think what I'd like to see is a prioritized list of the expenses in the operating fund so that when we get down to the bottom, and the question is, if we shave off $100,000 in the rate increase, what's the lowest priority project that would see that effect? Because all project lists have a priority. And I'd like to see the priority, the projects in priority order so that when we're talking about whatever the rate is and however we spread it, we can see the exact effect that we're having rather than speculating about it. That would be my request. And I'll make the motion that we postpone this topic until our next regular Board of Aldermen meeting and that staff provide that input.
Second. So what happens to the... Oh, he withdrew his motion, okay. So we have a motion to second to postpone, or what? Sorry, what? Table, postpone?
No, postpone is fine. That's the motion that's on the floor right now. I just wanted to clarify the statement. So Alderman Lucas withdrew his second, so the current motion...
I withdraw my motion.
Kendall, can... Okay, I'm just curious, with our budget timeline, right? If we postpone this until the next Board of Aldermen meeting, does that bump our budget back two weeks? I would imagine, because we can't go forward without knowing what those numbers are. Okay, which we can do. That's your prerogative too. So we'll just redo our finance committee timelines and other things. Okay.
So we have a motion to second to postpone? So we ready to vote on the postponement?
Yes.
Roll call?
No, sir.
Huh?
A voice vote is just fine.
All in favor of postponing this item, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. And I got to go to the bathroom. That took a long time. Can we take a little five-minute break? Yeah, we'll save five, but plan on a little more. Yeah, I won't flush the toilet.
Well, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. Everybody having a good time? Here we go. Thirteen seventeen. Are we ready for item sixteen, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, we are.
Let her rip.
Your Honor, this is the public hearing of first reading of bill number sixty-six zero zero and ordinance repealing ordinance number two thousand seven dash zero eight seven in the land use regulations under PD zero seven zero zero five for the Branson Ridge Winery and Marketplace Plan Development, Branson, Missouri.
All right, we will now have the public hearing and begin with the staff report from Amanda Ross.
Good evening. I'll get Chad to get me pulled up on the screen.
Yeah, one second, Amanda, I'm so sorry.
You're fine.
Chad, we've been on a ten-minute break. You been eating or? Okay. Is the mayor still on?
Play your mayors. Be on listening right along with everybody else.
All right, just making sure we didn't lose you. Chad's getting us ready.
I apologize.
That's okay. All right. The current property owner is seeking to repeal ordinance number two zero zero seven dash zero eight seven, a plan development and use regulations for the Branson Ridge Winery and Marketplace Plan Development. This property was originally approved for a winery and marketplace but was never completed. It's located at six forty-eight Sunrise Drive. The purpose of this revocation is to clear the outdated plan development to allow for a rezone. The future intent is to rezone the property for commercial and residential uses. The notice is published in Branson Tri-Lakes News on eight sixteen twenty-five. All required legal advertising has been completed. We're just going to look at an aerial map here of the location at six forty-eight Sunrise Drive. And here, to the north of this parcel is, just to give you context, is Highway F and the US sixty-five interchange. To the east of this parcel is Highway sixty-five. To the west is Branson Hills Plan Development. And to the south is an unincorporated Tannehill County, and it's not developed and has rolling hills. Here's a little bit of a zoom in on that location. The slide here shows both the Branson Hills Plan Development and the one we're here tonight, the Branson Ridge Winery and Marketplace Plan Development. The existing conditions here, just to name a few things, the site is not developed, it's adjacent to the Branson Hills PD to the west and south, surrounded partly by unincorporated Tannehill County land. It is zoned, planned development currently, and it's surrounded by residential and commercial The proposed zoning, which is going to be coming before you tonight, and I believe it's item eighteen, the applicant has also submitted for a rezone of this once the revocation of the plan development has passed. It is wanting, they're wanting to request it to have the medium-density residential, the neighborhood commercial, and the community commercial. Tonight's repeal is tied to that future zoning action, and rezone is going to be on item eighteen tonight. The code section here is ninety-four forty-eight, which outlines the conditions for the PD revocation. It applies when projects fail to start, fall behind, or plans are not followed. This PD meets the criteria for the revocation. Staff recommends approval with conditions. The condition of approval is contingent upon the rezoning approval. Applicant and staff are asking for a double read on this item tonight to keep construction on schedule and lower costs by letting the developers secure the property and complete critical site work before adverse weather conditions set in. We do have someone representing the developer tonight. Todd Chandler's here, if you have any questions, he's happy to answer them.
All right, anyone on the board wishing to speak on this matter? Todd, do you have anything you want to say?
Todd Chandler with Great River Engineering, one eighty-six South Payne Stewart Drive, Suite one fifty-one, Branson, Mo. Just a pretty simple request, obviously, the development actually started back in like two thousand seven. There is an existing foundation on the site, concrete foundation, that was poured for the winery. Obviously, we're not doing a winery, so that's the reason, that was the big purpose behind the revocation of the PD. This will be a future commercial business that we'll be submitting plans on, once this is approved as well, shortly, to the building department. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Quinn?
Not a question, I just want to say this is great. This property has been vacant since two thousand eight or so, and really is the subject of vandalism and other things that are going on in there. And with an immediate development, it improves our tax situation and so on and so forth. So I think it's great to move this thing forward.
Yeah, I believe there's a kind of a funny story on that, because, well, ironic story, somebody was doing like target practice or something, because they were in the county, and yeah, that was on that parcel. And yeah, it was getting nervous. A lot of people were nervous over the recplex in Branson Hills, so it'll be nice to have development going on this parcel.
Arty?
Todd, did I understand you right? You said you were not building a winery?
That is correct.
But...
That's why we're revoking the PD.
Yep.
And going with traditional zoning. We're not, you know, moving forward, we'll have it rezoned as, I think it's case eighteen, I believe, tonight.
Yep.
Anyone else have a question for Todd? Do you have a question, Ralph? You good?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Public hearing is now closed. You heard the first reading of bill number sixty-six zero zero. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any members of the board want to talk on this? Audience members? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Result of the vote is five-zero, motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to read bill number sixty-six hundred for its final reading due to timing.
Second.
Okay. Uh, is there, we're in a hurry for the, or was that? Is there a reason for the second read?
Yes.
For the, for the double read, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a great question. They're trying to close on the property this week so they can get some of the construction, try to get the building roofed in before the winter sets in. So really, you know, any time, any timeframe that we can get would be very advantageous for us moving forward.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the audience? We're going to vote on the, the double, oh, we're voting on the double read, right?
You're just voting to read it for the second time.
Yeah, we're voting to read it, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Result of the vote is five-zero, motion carries.
Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of bill number sixty-six zero zero and ordinance repealing ordinance number two thousand seven zero eight seven and land use regulations under PD zero seven zero zero five for the Branson Ridge Winery and Marketplace Plan Development, Branson, Missouri.
You've heard the final reading of bill number sixty-six zero zero. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Any members want to speak? Anyone in the audience? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you provide a roll call?
Lucas.
Yes.
Houghton.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yeah.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
The result of the vote is five-zero, motion carries. Your Honor, the next item is the public hearing and first reading of bill number sixty-six zero one and ordinance approving a street vacation for the property located at two eighteen South Old County Road, Branson, Missouri.
We will now open this public hearing and begin with a staff report from Amanda.
All right, let me just give you a little bit of history on this, street vacation that we have before you tonight. The applicant did a title search and an ALTA survey, and that is when they found that the remnant of the right-of-way, a nineteen-seventies plat, referenced it to be vacated, but they could never find any documentation or ordinance that proved it, which is why they are vacating it now to clean it up and have a clear title since it's tied to federal funding. This is a request for street vacation for the property located at two eighteen South Old County Road. We have our advertised in the Branson Tri-Lakes News on August sixteenth, and notice was sent to property owners within the hundred and eighty-five feet of the subject property. Visual shows the right-of-way location, which is north of the seventy-six corridor. South and west are established residential blocks. East is residential along Old County Road. Just give you a little zoom in. This next slide gives you a closer look here at the zoning. And the department and utility comments, this, all city departments have reviewed this request, no objections have been raised, and utility providers confirmed with no impact. Oh, I lost it. So you can see here that we did check with the water company, Liberty, Sutton Link, Summit Gas, White River Valley, Missouri American Water, our Branson Fire Department, and our Branson Utilities, and our Branson Public Works and Engineering. Again, no objections raised. The dimensions for the street vacation, it's a narrow remnant strip of right-of-way, it's approximately twenty-five feet by a hundred and forty feet. This is not needed for transportation, access, or public service. Staff is recommending approval of the request. The applicant is also asking for a double read tonight due to funding timelines, and Todd Chandler's here to answer any questions you might have.
Board? No? Todd?
Yes, this is, as Amanda stated, the request for vacation is really due for grant funding. That, I know a question is going to come up, is what's the need for a double read? But it's tied to grant funding. To be able to do interior renovations, as part of that, we have to clean up the survey. As she mentioned before, the ALTA survey found an easement that is not, has not been used, so the proper process for that is just to vacate it. So, and with that, I think it was a subdivision that was originally subdivided back in like, it was like the thirties, because it dates way back. So obviously, the uses of the property have changed. And with that, I can answer any questions you guys have.
What's the location of this?
It's, it's old county, county line road. It's back behind, oh, yeah, it's, there's the curve on seventy-six Country Boulevard, it's straight to the south of it.
The curve where?
Where that intersection is with Roark Valley Road and seventy-six.
Oh.
So like, that's right when you're entering the main part of the strip. I don't really know how to best describe that, but it's straight south of that, basically go to that first stoplight and make a left, go south, and it'll be on your left-hand side.
So yeah, it's, um...
Yeah.
North is Main and seventy-six.
Yeah, yeah, it's the, it's a multi-story assisted living facility. Yeah, I didn't, yeah. Not everybody knows where the assisted living facility is, so.
At our age, you start becoming more aware.
We're not vetting those yet, at least I'm not.
Anybody else? Questions? All right, you have a question?
It's a condition of the grant funding, because there's grants, I guess they've applied for a HUD grant to do interior renovations.
Interior renovations, okay.
Yeah, and as part of that, they have to go through environmental, the ALTA survey, so.
Yep. All right, good. Public hearing is now closed. We heard the first reading of bill number sixty-six oh one. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Mm-hmm. We have a motion and a second. Any members of the board? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Result of the vote is five-zero, motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to read bill number sixty-six zero one for its final reading due to grant funding timing.
We have a motion and a second. Any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? I thought we didn't like double reads. Anyone in the audience?
We're trying to be a little more developer-friendly.
Mm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Result of the vote is five-zero, motion carries.
Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of bill number sixty-six zero one and ordinance approving a street vacation for the property located at two eighteen South Old County Road, Branson, Missouri.
So moved.
All right, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any members of the board wishing to speak? Hearing none. Anyone in the audience? Madam Clerk, would you provide a roll call?
Lucas.
Yes.
Houghton.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
The result of the vote is five-zero, motion carries. Your Honor, the next item is a public hearing and first reading of bill number sixty-six zero two and ordinance approving a rezone from Plan Development PD to Community Commercial, CC, Medium Density Residential, MDR, and Neighborhood Commercial, NC, for the properties located at six forty-eight Sunrise Drive, Branson, Missouri.
We'll now open this public hearing, and more from Amanda.
All right. So this is item eighteen that I was speaking about. We just, on item sixteen, talked about the plan development and the revocation. This is a request for a rezone of that parcel, and it is, they're asking to rezone to Community Commercial, Neighborhood Commercial, and Medium Density Residential. The location again is six forty-eight Sunrise Drive. The future intent is a commercial flooring store on the east side of it with opportunity for additional commercial and residential development. Notice was published in the Branson Tri-Lake News Saturday, August sixteenth, notice of public hearing mailed to owners within a hundred and eighty-five feet of the subject Here's the same location that we saw earlier. North of this parcel is Highway F and the US sixty-five interchange. To the east of the parcel is Highway sixty-five. To the west is Branson Hills Plan Development, and to the south is unincorporated Tannehill County. This gives you a little closer view. This is the proposed zoning. The community commercial, as you see, will be along the primary frontage to support retail services and uses. The neighborhood commercial in the middle will allow buffering for the medium-density residential from CC, and the medium-density provides attainable housing opportunities. Staff recommends approval with one condition, a minor subdivision shall be required that correlates to the proposed zoning districts. If you have any questions, we have the buyer here tonight that can answer any questions, Alex.
Okay, anyone on the board want to speak?
Amanda, can you break down the minor subdivision that will be required to correlate?
Amanda, can you break down the minor subdivision that will be required to correlate to the proposed zoning district?
Break down the minor? Well, so we just want to make sure that the zoning districts, so we've been getting into this with a lot of different development where people want to minor subdivide before they go any further. Just, it helps in a couple of different ways, and Alex could maybe speak to why that's what they want to do. But oftentimes, it's, gives us an idea of what all is going to be built there. It gives the opportunity for the developer to showcase that in the same package as they are to ask for the zone, the rezone. It's just going to give us a better look and to know what's going to be future there, if that makes sense.
Has that already been presented, or is that to be presented?
To be presented. We are asking for a second read on this one as well, just because of the need for them to get started on the development before inclement weather rolls in.
Are you, you still talking? Do you have something to say? Oh. Uh, anyone else on the board? Audience, do Alex want to, do you have anything you want?
Good evening, Board, again. Alex, I'm Chief Operating Officer, Getting Floor, and your family flooring store. Been around for five years, and the Branson Meadows Mall currently occupying about 15,000 feet of leased space. Due to business, due to how things are going for our brand, we've been given an opportunity working with Jeff Reynolds to purchase this property that sat for as long as you all have discussed, and at a really good price, and we've got a great developer that's, you know, worked with the city of Branson before, and it's going to enable us to build a 26,000-square-foot facility on that existing foundation. One interesting note about this property, just about topography, is as you're southbound on 65, the first thing you're going to see from the northeastern limits of City of Branson is this property. So nothing's going to say welcome to Branson better than the red, white, and blue flooring store with a brand-new building, and that's the first thing you see as opposed to two stories of graffitied concrete dumping grounds and people illegally discharging firearms in the city limits. So we're greatly excited to get to bring development, responsible development funded by us, and it's on a tight timeline, so we appreciate the flexibility, and then also staff's support of that request to help put in a letter of enforcement in Branson Police Department and mitigate the illegal activity, to start groundwork, get everything off the ground, like, clean up the area, and, you know, once that ridgeline starts, I don't think it'll be long before Jeff Reynolds sells. I don't want to put any requirements on him, but that ridge is going to start to develop, and you've got commercial services aligned both in and out of city limits along that, that entire ridge. So we're excited to get to up the ante and build the largest flooring store in the region right here in Branson, Missouri.
There you have it.
So would you consider putting a welcome to Branson sign on the corner there?
In fact, I'm glad you, I'm glad that you brought that up. I think that it's been brought up in, I'm on the Comprehensive Planning Committee. I know it's been brought up in there as well, that, you know, most communities have a welcome to Branson. Yes, you can get off 65 and come up to the big I love Branson, but nothing would be better if we could come up with a responsible location to put a welcome to Branson, you know, you know you're here without hitting the exit. So you say that, we'd be greatly supportive in whatever way we can do with that, but that is something our community greatly needs, both southbound and northbound coming into the city proper.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jeff? James, anybody have anything? Highly recommended. Any board members? No? Public hearing is now closed. You heard the first reading of Bill Number 6602. Do I have a motion to approve in this bill?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any members? Anyone in the audience? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to read Bill Number 6602 for its final reading due to timing to avoid inclement weather.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any members of the board? No? Anyone in the audience? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of Bill Number 6602, an ordinance approving a rezone from planned development PD to community commercial CC, medium-density residential MDR, and neighborhood commercial NC for the properties at 648 Sunrise Drive, Branson, Missouri.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any members on the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? No, you're good. Anyone in the audience? Madam Clerk, would you provide a roll call vote?
Lucas.
Yes.
Howden.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 6603, an ordinance amending the Branson Municipal Code establishing exceptions to the automatic sprinkler system and alarm system requirements in Section 18-27 pertaining to the International Building Code.
You've heard the first reading of Bill 6603. Do I have a motion to approve in the bill?
So moved.
Mm-hmm. Motion and a second. Here's Amanda.
Okay, no slides for this one. This is just some housekeeping. In March of 2025, the Board adopted Ordinance Number 2025-0009, amending Chapter 42, the Fire Prevention and Protection of the Branson Municipal Code, to add targeted exceptions in Section 42 through 55, subsections 903 and 907 of the International Fire Code. Under that ordinance, standalone buildings classified in use group R1 that contain a single sleeping or dwelling unit comprised of 1,200 square feet or less of livable space and do not exceed six occupants may operate without installing an automatic sprinkler system or a fire alarm system. The proposed amendment to Chapter 18 that's coming to you tonight is the building regulation side. We want to mirror the fire codes. These changes to keep the city's building code and fire code consistent, without this update, Chapter 18, in our building code, we continue to require sprinklers and alarms for all group R occupancies, creating a conflict between codes and potential confusion for property owners, developers, and enforcement staff. Staff recommends approval.
All right. Any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this? Anyone in the audience? Please vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution certifying the 2025 Missouri Local Government Employees' Retirement System Loggers Delegates.
Do I have a motion adopting this resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. We'll now have a staff report from Haley.
Hello. Good evening. The City of Branson Board of Aldermen are required to certify two voting delegates for the Loggers Annual Meeting, which is being held this year on Thursday and Friday, October 30th and 31st in Springfield. Of the two voting delegates to be certified, one is an employer delegate and one is a member delegate. The employer delegate is a member of a governing body or its designated agent, voting on behalf of the Board of Aldermen. Historically, we have selected an employee as this designated agent to be the employer delegate, and therefore, we are recommending that the Board certify Kylene Cheney as the employer delegate. Kylan is our deputy city clerk and assists several employees with various questions regarding loggers, related questions and information. She's also on our employee HR committee. As part of the statute as well, we are also required to elect a member delegate. These are selected by the employees through secret ballot. A secret ballot was sent to employees through email on September 5th through September 10th, and as a result of these ballots, Norm Teed was selected to be the employee delegate. Staff is requesting to approve both delegates.
All right. Any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this? Anyone? Anyone down there? Anyone in the audience? All right, hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries. Your Honor, the next item is a resolution approving the 2026 Employee Wellness Program.
Do I have a motion adopting this resolution?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Haley?
Hi.
You're still there.
I'm still here, doing my two quick annual things.
You go, girl.
That's right. Every year, we implement a health and wellness program. We've been doing this since 2012. We are continuing on with this same program. As part of that program, our employees are required to submit that they are a non-nicotine user, or complete a smoking secession class or a tobacco secession class. And the other piece is that they are required to see their primary care physician and complete annual blood work. Our intent is that they have that relationship with their doctors, that they are seeing them at least once a year, and keeping ahead of things as preventively as they can. So we are asking for approval to continue on with our 2026 Wellness Program, to help incentivize those people to be healthy and keep our costs down.
Any board members wishing to speak to this? You have something, already? Anyone in the audience? All right, hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Haley.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 6604, an ordinance approving a lease purchase agreement with Simmons Bank for the purchase of public safety vehicles for the Fire Department and authorizing the mayor to execute the documents related thereto.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6604. Do I have a motion to approve in this bill?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Allison, you ready?
Yep.
Okay.
Approved as part of the 2025 budget was the purchase of fleet vehicles for the Fire Department. So this agreement before you is a three-year lease term with a purchase price of $109,536 and an interest rate of four and a half percent, and then the annual payment will be $38,200. Are there any questions? Two fire fleet vehicles, so the ones that the department had to drive around and our battalion chiefs and...
She's getting a new vehicle. Ottoman Schultz?
So it's four and a half percent for the lease. What do we make on our investments as a city?
Right now, we're coming in around five percent for all of our investments and our portfolio.
So this makes sense, then, to borrow at a lower rate?
Yes.
Anybody else? Anyone in the audience? Hearing none, please vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
See, why do I have to be the one?
You're the guy.
Your Honor, I move to read Bill Number 6604 for its final reading due to timing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any members on the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of Bill Number 6604, an ordinance approving a lease purchase agreement with Simmons Bank for the purchase of public safety vehicles for the Fire Department and authorizing the mayor to execute the documents related thereto.
You have heard the final reading of Bill Number 6604. Do I have a motion to approve in this?
So moved.
Jeez. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any members on the, of the board wishing to speak to this matter? Anyone in the audience regarding this matter? All right, Madam Clerk, will you provide a roll call?
Lucas.
Yes.
Howden. Cooper.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 6605, an ordinance approving the purchase agreement with McQueen Equipment LLC for the purchase of a fire truck and authorizing the mayor to execute the documents related thereto.
You've heard the first reading of Bill 6605. Do I have a motion to approve in the bill? Ralph had the most first.
So moved.
Second, all right. Motion and a second. Allison?
As part of the 2025 budget, there was a purchase of a new fire engine that was approved within that budget, so this will be that agreement with McQueen to purchase the fire engine. Are there any questions about the new truck?
What? You got any questions about the new truck? No? Anyone? Anyone in the audience? Okay, hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Bob Simmons, forgive me. Your Honor, I move to read Bill Number 6605 for its final reading due to timing.
Bob Simmons would never vote on a double read, ever. Okay, motion and a second. We have a motion, anybody, anybody on the board wanting to speak on this? Anyone in the audience? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Madam Clerk, would you please provide a introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of Bill Number 6605, an ordinance approving the purchase agreement with McQueen Equipment LLC for the purchase of a fire truck and authorizing the mayor to execute the documents related thereto.
So moved.
You've heard the final reading of Bill 6605. Do I have a motion to approve in this bill? I just said that? Where am I? Any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the audience? Are we doing a roll call now?
We are, yes, sir.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, yes, Lucas.
Uh-huh.
Howden.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Schultz. The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
I'm sorry, Chief Schmidt was distracting me.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 6606, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Branson, authorizing the execution and delivery of a master equipment lease purchase agreement and a separate equipment schedule thereto for the acquisition, financing, and leasing of certain equipment for the public benefit within the terms herein provided, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith, and authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by this ordinance.
What'd you say?
It was not me.
I'm just kidding. You ready for me? You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6606. Do I have a motion to approve in this bill?
So moved.
You've got a motion and a second, and Allison is still there.
My final item, this item is to approve the lease purchase of the fire truck that you just approved, and some dump trucks for our Public Works Department. The dump trucks will be a five-year lease term with a purchase price of $439,238 and an interest rate of 3.3729% and an annual payment of $93,770. The fire truck is a seven-year term with a purchase price of $1,848,919 and an interest rate of 3.4191% with an annual payment of $291,502.
No, I just, that's a lot of numbers. Wow.
Well, not only is it a lot of money, but it had to be ordered, what, almost two years in advance, or four years in advance, yeah, so...
Okay. Anyone on the board wanting to speak on this? Big Daddy Fire Truck? Anybody? Anybody in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Nope, Marshall? I've just about had enough of them.
Your Honor, I move to read Bill Number 6606 for its final reading due to timing.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any members of the board wishing to speak? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
What, what?
Your Honor...
I thought we were going on to...
So that was just voting for, to read it for the second time. So that was just voting for to read it for the second time.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, provide an introduction for this item, I'm sorry.
Your honor, this is the final reading of bill number sixty six zero six, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Branson authorizing the execution and delivery of a master equipment lease purchase agreement and separate equipment schedule thereto for the acquisition, financing, and leasing of certain equipment for the public benefit within the terms herein provided, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith and authorizing the taking of all actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this ordinance.
All right.
So moved.
Thank you, Glenn. Any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge the team that for the fire, fire truck that there was a committee put together and they worked diligently to put that thing together the way that they need it to put together. Again, just ensuring that public safety is top of mind and is, yeah, that's, that's a cool thing. That's great.
Anyone else? No? Anyone in the audience? All right, Madam, let's see. Madam Clerk, will you provide a roll call vote?
Lucas.
Yeah.
Howden.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries. Your honor, this is the first reading of bill number sixty six zero seven, an ordinance amending section two dash three eighty-nine of the Branson municipal code pertaining to the written sunshine law policy for the city of Branson.
So moved. Second.
He's not even letting me read my line, okay? All of a sudden Glenn is in a hurry. Put that on the record. We have a motion in a second, and we'll begin with a report from Hillary.
Hello. So this code amendment is coming before you tonight. We have to adopt a written sunshine law policy. In two thousand twenty-four, we did that and we codified it. When we did that, we stipulated that if a request was not responded to by the requestor within fifteen days, it would be considered inactive. They have since changed the state statute to have that timeframe be ninety days. So now our code is out of date, so this code amendment is just bringing it up to date. Also, I'll be requesting a double read. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. We needed that.
You better. It's gonna be snowing here in a couple of months.
I'll be answering any questions.
So you're just, you're, we're getting in a line with, we're not, yeah, with state statute, okay? So now you can make a request and it's good for ninety days?
Correct, yes.
Wow, okay. All right. Anybody on the board? Any audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Back on your paper again. Okay, reports. Alderman Lucas.
Downtown is looking great, getting ready for the Fall Fest this weekend. The streets are looking great, Michael. Thank you for all your departments. Great work. I kind of want to piggyback on Marshall's prayer about what happened this last week when we lost a great American and how thankful I am to be able to live in a city that's full of great Americans and how we love our country. Pray for his family.
Thank you, Artie. Hey, quick shout out to our high school team, Branson Pirates, as I like to do from this dais. We had a setback at the beginning of the season, but we have since won three straight, which means that we have kept our streak alive. We've now won eleven straight against in-season opponents, or excuse me, in-state opponents, regular season. And in our second year in the Ozark Mountain Conference, the newly formed Ozark Mountain Conference, we have yet to lose a game. So shout out to Coach Hafner, just a marked improvement in the program. It's really remarkable and super exciting and brings a lot of pride and joy to our city. So shout out and go Pirates.
Yeah. LeBlanc. You have anything to say? Yeah, well, I was just gonna wait and.
You're in charge, you can do that.
Time's up.
Team, congratulations, brother. You guys pulled off a feat that many thought was impossible, and you guys made it possible. Not only you made it possible, but you guys got it finished a month ahead of time and under budget, okay? So the idea of fiscal responsibility, I think this community and this board and this administration puts fiscal responsibility at the forefront of everything that they do, every single thing that they do. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scene that nobody gets to see from the directors allowing their staff to take on projects and do things in-house where past administrators have outsourced those things and didn't care what the budget was, just spent the money anyway. These directors take the liberty of investing in their people, and that's why the city of Branson is a great place to work because of the leadership that we have in this community. So the idea of that we lack fiscal responsibility is absolutely absurd. And I think it's, again, face forward in the forefront of everything this administration does and everything this board looks at is, that's the first thing that we look at. So to the rest of the community, you got great leaders in this, in this community. They're doing the right thing at the right time, and that's why Branson is continuing to strive the way that it is. And I think we have a tailwind behind us and great things are to come.
Alderman Schultz?
Yeah, first I just want to say congratulations to our own Jason Wirt.
Yeah.
He showed up. Missouri Press Association gave him the twenty twenty-five Best Serious Columnist Award. So that's fantastic.
Mighty fun.
I attended the CERT classes that the city offered. That was two and a half days worth of classes, a lot of fun. Josh Helper in the PD organized that. The instructors were people from the Branson Fire Department and a bunch of CERT instructors. Learned a lot about emergency management, CERT structure, supporting professional fire, our first responders, psychology of disasters, triage, and trauma first aid. It was just a great two and a half days. They're going to offer this again sometime in May, I think it sounds like. Is that right, chief? In, in May? I'd recommend anybody that wants to see and support our, support our fire department, see how they work as long, as well as the police department and do it as a community effort. I think it's a great class to go to. You'll learn a lot. It was just fantastic. I continue to hear compliments on the downtown project overall, and I probably hear more about the new sign than anything else. Everybody loves the sign. Loves the sign. All you have to do is stand downtown and be looking up at the sign, and people will walk up next to you and say, that's a great looking sign. You know, they don't even know who you are. So it's, it's just great. I can't wait to see the final touches with the new lampposts and the zigzag lighting across the street. I think that's going elevated to another level, so thanks to everybody involved in that. And then similar to my counterpart in our ward, the date is October third and fourth for Fall Festival, so I think that's two weekends from now. All right, whatever. Two weekends from now. We want them to show up on the right date. If you're not aware of it, it runs the third and fourth. It's a Friday and Saturday from ten AM. And ready for this, Ralph? Eight PM on a Saturday. Eight PM, the festival goes. So they're open for extended hours down there. They're going to have scavenger hunts, lots of live entertainment, decorations, balloon artists, face painters, artisans, sidewalk sales, walking magicians, and a whole bunch more. The entertainers, the musical entertainers are a full page in themselves. And they run from ten in the morning till six, seven PM at night. So a lot of great things. I'd encourage everybody to get out there, celebrate the opening of the new Main Street project. All of downtown is open. No streets will be blocked off. Everything will be on the sidewalks and the parking areas, so come and have a great time on the third and fourth. That's it for me.
Yeah. I too want to say congratulations, Jason. That's, that's cool, man. I, next year will be my fortieth year of entertaining in Branson, and I've seen a lot of reporters come and go, and you do as good of a job as anybody else, highlighting the entertainment in this town and coming up with creative ways to write stories, reaching out. You just sent an email to us, what, was that today or a couple of days ago, reaching out, wanting people to come and tell their stories and talk about their interaction with veterans and all this stuff, and he really does a good job, really good job. And we, I had Randy Travis at the theater Sunday night, sold out. It was just amazing. Looking forward to having him back a few times next year, and everything's cooking, man. We've had a great year. Really. You didn't, you should have come. Oh, I'm so sorry. I know, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you came to that in May. Oh, I didn't. Okay, well.
I want to be when Mo Bandy's there and.
Mo Bandy, I, I, I'll hook y'all up. Got Mo Bandy coming, Isaacs, TG Shepard. Sleep at the Will, they're all gonna be there, so anyhow, I just say it's been a great year, and thanks again, Jason, for that. Kathy, you have anything?
First and foremost, since he's had such a lovely evening with all of you this evening, I thought it would be appropriate to wish Kendall Powell a very happy birthday. Can you believe he spent his birthday here tonight?
Ouch.
So happy birthday to our Kendall and many, many more. Kendall's a very young man. You guys probably don't know that. He's like forty, forty-one, something like that. And, oh, forty-four. Okay, like, there's a big difference at that point. There isn't. So he's a child, is really what I'm trying to say.
He's a child.
But he's very experienced, and Kendall, thank you again for your presentation tonight. And also, I don't want to forget the utilities group that worked really hard downtown along with Michael and his team, of course, ESS, the contractor. And again, prayers still going out for the families impacted by the accident downtown always. And we are working with the family, by the way, to put a memorial bench and a memorial plaque together in honor of the the young man that passed away in that accident, and so we'll have more to come on that as it unfolds. And again, congratulations. There were many, many naysayers, and you guys pulled this thing together, and it's gonna be amazing. When we get all the different icing, the icing on the cake, it's gonna be profound. And I also want to give a shout out to Alderman LeBlanc and our mayor for the design of the historic downtown Branson. Yes, it was rough. It looked like a third grader drew it, but we were able to make something amazing. Look at Larry's face.
I thought the mayor drew that.
He did. He drew it. We saved it, mayor. Just so you know, we saved the sketch that you made for us for, you know, we'll put it in the time capsule or something when we get a chance. But thank you guys for your support for that. And Michael for his brilliant idea to backlight all the letters. That was an afterthought and an add-on, and it's amazing. So again, it's just a sign of things to come. And any, I also want to thank you guys for the spirited discussion on the utility rates. That's the absolute appropriate conversation to have in the public arena so that everybody understands where their elected officials are coming from, what their perspectives are. And at the end of the day, however it lands, we'll implement whatever it is that you give us and make the best use of those dollars, so. Thank you.
Yeah. Mayor, before you speak, I just want to apologize for Kathy. I, I felt like that was more like seventh grade level, not really third grade level, so. Yeah, it's drawing, yeah. I loved it. Mayor, would you, would you like to speak, mayor?
I sure would. In fact, I don't want to let this opportunity pass. If you all join in with me singing, Kendall, happy birthday.
Yeah.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Kendall. Happy birthday to you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would also like to thank Michael Woods, his entire team, CSS Construction. Downtown, I know there was some concerns in that at the beginning, but it does look beautiful.
Yep.
Once we get the final touches like the lighting in that end, it'll just be another icing on the cake, as Kathy said. So I just want to give a congrats to that. And other than that, I agree with Kathy. I think a spirited discussion with taxpayer dollars, especially affecting our utility rates, is, that's the way democracy is intended to work. So with that, I want to thank the board, thank the mayor, thank Kathy, and call it a night.
Ten four. All right. With that, I'll take a motion to leave this.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone opposed to leaving? Meeting adjourned.